Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, lore and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today and those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? Councillor Dixon.
Chair, I wish to advise that Councillor Atwood will be absent today and I move that she be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded. It has been moved by Councillor Dixon and seconded by Councillor Givney that Councillor Atwood be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Are there any further apologies? Confirmation of minutes, please.
Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,767th meeting held on Tuesday, the 10th of June, 2025, be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded. Has been moved by Councillor Dixon and seconded by Councillor Givney that the minutes of the 4,767th meeting of council held on the 10th of June, 2025, be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no.
No.
The ayes have it. Councillors, I would like to call on Mr David Hanson, who will address the chamber on Crime Stoppers Queensland. Please proceed when you're ready. You have five minutes.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Lord Mayor, councillors. Thank you for the opportunity and to provide you with an update on Crime Stoppers Queensland. When joining as CEO just on two years ago, my friends thought that I was joining the police. And indeed, when I meet people in the community now, I'm still a lot of confusion around whether I'm police or not. And sure, as a young boy growing up in Aspli, I did play cops and robbers and I did book some of my mates who were riding too fast and pulled out my spiral pad with pen and write them a theoretical speeding ticket. And it may have fostered a bit of that notion around having something to do in the community with crime and safety. And that interest, although it is obviously resulted in me in this role, what is interesting is that that misconception around what Crime Stoppers is, exists today and that we aren't the police, we are a separate not-for-profit organisation. Over the past 35 years, Crime Stoppers Queensland has been instrumental in solving and preventing crimes within Brisbane and across the great state we have. We've received over 1.3 million anonymous reports reflecting the community's trust in us and our commitment to their safety. I'm proud to lead a not-for-profit organisation, which State Ride receives 5,000 anonymous reports each month and 1,100 of those reports come from Brisbane. Just last month, Crime Stoppers tips helped police arrest 15 people on 71 charges, seize weapons, explosives and over $200,000 worth of drugs. Clearly, we are helping to make safer and more livable cities. Engaging with and learning about policing, I found inspirational, but the one thing that made me sit up and take notice was that there's approximately one sworn officer for every 440 Queenslanders. The thin blue line takes on a whole new meaning. So how do we help make police even more effective with the resources that they have? It's no coincidence that Crime Stoppers Queensland purpose is to empower the community to anonymously provide information that supports the solving and prevention of crime. Imagine if we can empower all Brisbane residents to volunteer a few moments when they see something suspicious. Our board of directors, all of whom are volunteers, have endorsed our strategic approach, which is to enhance community safety through collaborative partnerships. Those partnerships help underpin our relevance to the community and the modernisation of our trusted service. The three elements of the strategy are community relevance, engaged partnerships and increased impact. As it relates to community relevance, we focused on identifying the relevant issues impacting communities, such as firearms being stolen from rural areas, ending up in major cities and falling into the hands of major organised crime groups. Getting back to basics with community education, such as the Brisbane Local Legends Campaign, the three phases of which being see something, say something, they'll never know it was you and to promote a sense of citizenship, your Brisbane, your call. We're taking these messages to local community groups and asking attendees to commit to sharing what they've learnt with at least one other person. Using examples and exercises, we are finding that only 10% of people would report having seen something suspicious, able to identify something suspicious. So we are working towards educating the public on why even small pieces of information could be helpful and that even seemingly insignificant, it might make all the difference. Our proposition to the community for youth crime is peer reporting. We are connecting with AFPs, Think You Know and other initiatives and other community groups. In terms of engaged partnerships, we mean partnerships in the sense of working together towards our purpose. In Brisbane, we're commencing work with council on specific local challenges, like graffiti hotspot in West End and the under-reporting of crime against businesses in the Queen Street Mall precinct. We're also connecting to industry forums such as the Queensland Critical Infrastructure Group, which is tackling copper theft, which impacts councils, schools and sporting clubs alike. We are working with technology providers in developing improvements to our reporting platform and this leads to the last strategic element, increased impact. We're using technology and data, well, probably aspirational more than using it right now, but using technology and data to make our service more accessible, improve collaboration and enhance the experience for those providing information and those using it. Currently, about one in three anonymous reports are actionable by police. So we're aiming to increase that rate of conversion, starting with more accessible website launching next quarter, followed by updates to our reporting platform question sets. It's a lot for our team of 3.6 full-time equivalent people to get through, but we're managing. Working with police, the community and with valuable support from organisations, including the Brisbane City Council.
Thank you, Mr Hanson. Sorry, I'll have to stop you there.
That's all right.
Thank you. I'll now call...
Almost got there.
Well done. I'll now call upon Councillor Howard to respond.
Well, thank you, David. David and I just met just a couple of weeks ago and I was able to reminisce with him because I was at one of those volunteer directors for 11 years, a very, very long time ago. But fantastic to hear all of the good work that continues to be done by such an important programme and we really thank you for coming to the chamber and to address the chamber today. I was really pleased when you said that was going to happen. Didn't realise it was going to happen so quickly, but it's fantastic to hear from you and we deeply value the work that Crime Stoppers does, providing an anonymous and accessible way for residents to speak up about crime without that fear of retaliation. And I think that's something that, a message that we need to get across and yes, for as long as I've been involved in Crime Stoppers, we've been trying to tell people that we're not part of the police. So it is a really important message. It's a lifeline actually for many people and a pillar of trust between our citizens and the broader justice system. And as you mentioned, the statistics speak for themselves. It's been a very, very successful programme, right across the world in fact, and here in Australia, it's been going from strength to strength for many, many years. Thousands of tips, hundreds of arrests, every one of those numbers represents a safer street and a community that feels empowered to take action. Because we know that crime prevention doesn't just begin and end with police, it starts in our homes, our schools, our neighbourhoods and with community-led organisations like yours. We've been proud to support Crime Stoppers for many years now, to make sure that Brisbane is not just a vibrant and livable city, but a safe one. Your address to council today is a powerful reminder of just how critical Crime Stoppers is to the safety of our community. Crime Stoppers creates a space where people can take action confidently and anonymously and that is a powerful thing. So on behalf of council, I want to thank you, not just for your words today, but for the tireless work and for that your volunteers do every day. And we look forward to continuing our work together to make sure Brisbane is the best place to live, work and relax. And I also want to mention that I think you're already working with a lot of our councillors in the chamber and I know that Councillor Givney has given me a long list of things that she works with you and one of the things, Coffee with the Cop events, I know that a lot of our councillors hold those. So colleagues, if you would like to talk to David about attending some of those and of course, we're just about to announce some of our safer communities initiatives. So any of those types of activities, please talk to David. We really appreciate you coming in today and talking to us and thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Howard and thank you, Mr Hanson, for coming in today. Councillors will now move to question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, in recent days, we have seen other councils hand down their budgets with new levies and rate rises for residents. Can you please update the chamber on what residents can expect from your budget tomorrow?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Councillor Wolf, for the questions. Through you, Madam Chair, well, only one slip to go. What can people expect? They can expect a responsible budget, they can expect a balanced budget, they can expect a budget that only spends what we can afford to spend as a city, they can expect a budget that is based on a key principle. It's not council's money, it's residents' money. It's not council's money, it's your money.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Completely inappropriate. Councillors, you know very well, you shouldn't be speaking and calling out when another councillor is on their feet. And I ask that you do not call out Councillor Griffiths, which you are continuing to say. I heard you say it's a joke and I am cautioning you straight up.
Madam Chair.
Well, there's no point of order while I'm in the middle of speaking to you. Thank you, Councillor Wolf.
I'm just waiting.
You can wait and I'll caution you for that unsuitable meeting conduct. Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, I actually thought the Lord Mayor was having a joke. I was laughing.
That is not a point of order. And yes, I caution you, Councillor Cassidy. Lord Mayor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. As I was saying, residents can expect a responsible budget, a balanced budget, a budget that only spends what we can afford to spend, a budget that respects the fact that it's residents' money, not council's money, that we're talking about here, but also a budget that keeps our commitment to the people of Brisbane. And that commitment, as you know, Madam Chair, was to have the lowest rates in South East Queensland for our residents. That is something we promised last year at the election and that is something that tomorrow's budget will deliver. We took that promise very seriously, as we do all of our promises, but fundamentally, people can expect the cheapest residential rates in South East Queensland. But also, we know that a number of other councils are introducing or have introduced new levies on their rates. And so in light of that and in light of the financial challenges that we're seeing across local government and other councils, I can confirm, we will not be introducing a cyclone levy. We will not be introducing an infrastructure levy and we will not be introducing a transport levy. And so other councils have all these extra levies on top of the rates and we won't be introducing new levies in the upcoming budget tomorrow. And what we will do is we will have Australia's most generous pensioner rebate scheme and that will continue. One that is hundreds and hundreds of dollars more than any other council provides. We will also make sure that residents keep their on-time payment discount as well, not something that all councils have. How is this possible, Madam Chair? How is it possible to have the cheapest rates in South East Queensland? Because we made the decisions that we needed to make back in late 2023 and last year again to reduce our spending. And we did that to keep rates low and that's exactly what we promised residents at the time. We were upfront with people about what we were doing and why we were doing it. And it's interesting, Madam Chair, because one of our mayor or colleagues, just to our south in Logan, now Mayor John Raven is a proud member of the Australian Labor Party. I've seen his social media where he gets out the red pen and talks to his residents about the need to reduce spending in Logan. Now, good on you, Mayor Raven, you're doing the right thing to keep rates low. That's exactly what we did in 2023 and 2024 and I can tell you, our budget is stronger as a result of that action that we have taken. By proactively making that decision, we got ahead of the game to make sure that tomorrow we can release a budget that delivers the cheapest rates in South East Queensland.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Last year, Lord Mayor, you said you wanted to build Brisbane's Central Park, in your words, cherishing the green space we have at Victoria Park. You also said that if a stadium was to be built at the site, only 10% of the 64 hectares would be taken up. Again, three months ago, you said there would be no net loss of parkland when the stadium is built and what's proposed will take up, again, your words, a fraction of Victoria Park. Well, yesterday, the Premier admitted that they will need 30 hectares of the park for the stadium, that's around 50%. So why is it that you only share your version of the truth with the people of Brisbane?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wonder why every project that is positive for Brisbane and that represents progress is always opposed by the Australian Labor Party and always opposed by the Greens. I don't know if Councillor Cassidy has actually taken the mood of the community on Victoria Park Stadium, but they love it. They love it. They can't wait for it. There's a couple of local NIMBYs linked to the Greens who want to stop it, but everyone else loves it. Absolutely can't wait for it to be built. And Councillor Cassidy, you can listen to those noisy NIMBYs or you can listen to the people of Brisbane. And the people of Brisbane have clearly spoken, they support the Premier's plan, it's going to be a fantastic outcome for Brisbane and for Queensland and it will be a destination that will be absolutely a must-do. It will also be a home for AFL, for cricket in Brisbane and it will be a home for major events, concerts that we currently lose because we don't have venues that have the capacity to take those concerts. There will be so many benefits that flow on from this. And so, Councillor Cassidy, you can choose to oppose it, just like you opposed Brisbane Metro, just like you opposed the King Smith Drive upgrade.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, point of order.
Look, just on relevance, I know the Lord Mayor's very excited about it, but my question was, why didn't he tell the truth?
That's, I don't uphold that point of order. You've asked a question and Councillor Griffiths and the Lord Mayor is answering the question. Councillor Griffiths?
It's a comment.
Lord Mayor.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Well, Councillor Cassidy may or may not be aware that there is no detailed design for the stadium and what's going to happen next is that, is that the government will go out through this new delivery authority, will go out to seek proposals from different consortia and they will put forward their plans for the stadium. So for Councillor Cassidy to say that he knows what the outcome of that is, he is making it up, is absolutely making it up. Now, we know, we know that there will be three, there will be two or three different stadium designs and we know that until the delivery authority selects the preferred stadium design, he can't make any claims about, he can't make any claims.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor.
He can't make any claims.
One moment, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, I'm cautioning you again. That is unsuitable meeting conduct. Councillor Cassidy, don't, don't debate me. Lord Mayor.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order.
There were clearly councils on that side of the chamber making noise, you didn't, you didn't discipline them.
Councillor Griffiths, you are completely aware of the situation in this chamber and that when...
You rule one way for the LNP and you rule one way for the opposition. That's what I'm completely aware of.
And I caution you again, Councillor Griffiths, and you are completely aware and I don't know why I have to keep reminding a councillor of the rules in this chamber and that I have to remind you that when someone on this side of the chamber is speaking and they're boosted by their colleagues, that I allow that and you know that very well. And once again, we're using question time for me to explain the rules of the chamber to people who've been in this chamber a very long time. So I will say it again.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
I am still speaking, Councillor Griffiths. Please wait till I'm finished. And Councillor Johnson, I don't need those comments either. So I remind councillors to remain quiet while another councillor is on their feet speaking. You had a point of order, Councillor Griffiths? No, good, I won't. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Now, there's been speculation about what percentage of the park will be required for the stadium. Now, a couple of things have happened. So first of all, there was a review called the Quirk Review. My figure came out of that review. Now, obviously, things have changed since then. Number one, there's actually going to be an aquatic centre, a $1 billion aquatic centre built in Victoria Park. And so obviously, that is a new development that wasn't part of any statement that was referred to in the Quirk Report. So the Quirk Report was the basis of the information that I had, but obviously, things will change as the design is locked in. And so we'll have two or three consortia come together, they'll put forward their proposals and I know for a fact that one of the requirements out of this proposal process or tender process will be to make sure that the maximum green space is available to the community. That will be absolutely one of the requirements. And so ultimately, we'll see a great competitive process here, we'll see a great outcome for Brisbane and we see a project that has the great support of the people of Brisbane and the people of Queensland behind it. And now, Councillor Cassidy, as I said, can continue to oppose, just like he has done with virtually everything that has been done to progress our city, whether it's metro, whether it's major projects, always chooses to oppose. That's disappointing, but in the end, we are excited about the progress of the city. We're excited about the future of this city. We're excited about the legacy opportunities that will come from the Olympic and Paralympic Games, things that will leave a lasting benefit for our community and whether it is a stadium that Brisbane deserves and Queensland deserves or an aquatic centre that Queensland deserves, having the majority of the most successful swimmers coming from Queensland, these are things that will leave an incredible benefit to the city of Brisbane. And so people know my view on it and we know Councillor Cassidy's view. Opposition for opposition's sake, it's not surprising, but it's disappointing.
Further questions? Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, Councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, we've heard a lot over the last few weeks about what Brisbane's new bus network will mean for commuters. Some of it true, some of it not. Can you please update the chamber on how the Shrinna Council is keeping Brisbane moving by making sure our public transport network is keeping up with the times?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Councillor Parry for the question because we are just two weeks away from the launch of Brisbane's new bus network and residents are busy learning what these changes mean for them. Across Brisbane, information sessions are being held to help people plan their new journey. At busway stations, customer support staff are informing residents about Brisbane's new bus network and I was very gratified to hear from multiple councillors on our side of the chamber, them experiencing this happening just this morning on their trip into town. People are also jumping on Journey Planner and council's interactive map to see how the changes impact them. Of course, council has been working incredibly hard to inform people of the changes and the community is listening. We know change can be daunting and so that's why we're here to help. Our efforts have been focused on helping people navigate the new network because on the 30th of June, Brisbane's new bus network will begin and our public transport network is ready for it. For years, the Shrinna Council has been investing in Brisbane Metro. It has been investing in Brisbane Metro because this is a project that needs to be done. Forming the spine of our new bus network, these high-frequency, high-capacity buses will operate along two key routes. Introduced from January 2025, the M2 route has already serviced over 1.7 million passengers. This represents more than a 25% increase on the former Route 66. People are voting with their feet when it comes to Brisbane Metro. Brisbane's unique Bus Rapid Transit has proven successful and it's not stopping there, Madam Chair. On the 30th of June, alongside Brisbane's new bus network, we're introducing the M1 service, which will operate between Roma Street and Eight Mile Plains. The new metro route will replace the popular 111 and 160 bus routes, which will boost capacity by more than 7.1 million customers each year. Just like the M2, the M1 will run at five-minute frequencies during the morning and afternoon peak each day. A high-capacity metro service will also run 24 hours during the weekend. Metro services will form the core of our new bus network. They will also mark a new era of public transport in Brisbane. Bus Rapid Transit is the future for our city. Across the globe, cities are embracing this transit mode. In San Francisco, the densely populated Van Ness Avenue has been transformed by Bus Rapid Transit. Previously known for its congestion and road accidents, a BRT solution was implemented in April of 2022. This has resulted in 36% faster travel times, an increase in reliability of 45% and traffic collisions being halved. Bus Rapid Transit is efficient and reliable and it's why we've chosen to implement it here in Brisbane. On the 30th of June, our bus network will be moving to a hybrid network, or a hub-and-spoke as it's known. Previously, it has operated largely as a direct service model to the CBD. This has resulted in too many buses coming into the city. As Brisbane continues to grow, this style of network is no longer fit for purpose. That's why we're introducing a high-frequency BRT metro to service the core of our network. Suburban buses across Brisbane will feed into this core. What this means for passengers is the introduction of two-seat journeys. In Brisbane, already 30% of passengers travel using a two-seat journey, so this is not a foreign concept for our city. But for those in the southern part of our city, this concept will indeed be new. But it is nothing to be scared of. Unlike two-seat journeys or transfers in other cities, our transfers will happen at the same platform. This means you get off a suburban bus, wait a couple of minutes and then hop straight on to a metro service. Transferring services may be frustrating to some, it may seem like a change in the wrong direction, but the choice is this, waiting three minutes at a busway station for a metro or waiting 20 minutes stuck on Victoria Bridge in traffic on the busway? This is the choice, reliability or congestion. Moving to a hybrid network improves connectivity across our city. Transfers are a good thing when it comes to public transport. It demonstrates that the network is keeping up with growth and as one of the fastest-growing cities in Australia, we cannot afford to do business as usual. In 2032, we will be on the world stage and we'll need a public transport network that can support us for decades to come. On the 30th of June, it's turn up and go time, Madam Chair.
Further questions? Councillor Kim.
Lord Mayor, over the past few weeks, Brisbane, my question, sorry, is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, over the past few weeks, Brisbane has seen how you have neglected the Story Bridge, failing to act on its restoration despite being warned multiple times since 2016.
Yeah, yeah.
Last week, the ABC uncovered reports you tried to keep secret about how you have failed a core council responsibility by maintaining trees, putting the public at risk. In two weeks, you roll out a bus network upgrade with less services and less bus stops in Brisbane suburbs. Over the past 18 months, we've seen 480 permanent staff cut from council on your watch at a time where our growing Olympic City needs more support. Next month, you're flying to New York to learn about leadership, avoiding responsibility for your failures. So, Lord Mayor, as you polished your budget speech, isn't it clear that the one thing Brisbane can't afford is you?
Lord Mayor.
Well, the Greens might think that's a great question, but it was wrong on every single count mentioned. Let's go through each point. Let's go through each point. Trees. We've got a proud history of making sure we plant more trees. We have delivered millions and millions of trees across Brisbane. We have boosted the green cover of Brisbane. Nobody has planted more trees in the history of the city than this administration and its predecessors. So you're wrong councillor Kim, you're absolutely wrong through you, Madam Chairman. On the Story Bridge, nobody has invested more on the Story Bridge than myself as Lord Mayor of this city, and that continues, and you'll see tomorrow, more to come. Nobody. So you're wrong councillor Kim. On the Brisbane Bus Network, the new bus network and metro, nobody has invested more into public transport and boosting services. And councillor Kim correctly, incorrectly claims that there's somehow a reduction in services. Didn't she listen to councillor Murphy just a few minutes ago, who explained exactly why it's happening, why it will be good, and why it will be a record investment in public transport? Now, if councillor Kim wants to complain about a trip that has no cost to ratepayers, then she would have egg on her face, because just last week in this council chamber, she justified her own trip. That was exactly the same. So wrong on all counts councillor Kim, sorry.
Further questions councillor Huang?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Deputy Mayor. Deputy Mayor, the Shrinna Council is making Brisbane's lifestyle even better by ensuring that our parks and public spaces are safe for all residents to enjoy. Can you please update the chamber on the latest initiative being rolled out to help improve community safety in Brisbane?
Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Madam Chair, and I'd like to thank councillor Huang for this important question and for filling in for me in the committee report last week. The Shrinna Council has invested over $2 million, Madam Chair, in our city's safe network this financial year, which helps keeps our community safe. The suburban safety camera has been a key part of that investment, which is why I thought it was appropriate to have a committee presentation highlighting the hard work and the ongoing achievements. Madam Chair, as part of the suburban safety camera programme, our Lord Mayor committed to delivering 10 fixed CCTV cameras in crime hotspots across Brisbane. I'm pleased to say that all 10 have been delivered within the first financial year, an outstanding achievement in our efforts to keep Brisbane safe. Two of these cameras are located in the Gabber Ward, one at Musgrave Park and another on Boundary Street. Yet last week, I was quite shocked to hear councillor Massey claim there was no evidence supporting the installation of CCTV in Musgrave Park. That, Madam Chair, is simply just not true. Through you, Madam Chair, councillor Massey should consider speaking to workers on the front line instead of hassling them at the picket lines. Our workers reported that they could no longer safely maintain Musgrave Park for the residents of her ward. Crews were being verbally abused and threatened, and were put at risk with drug utensils. These are council employees, and we have a serious legal responsibility to ensure their safety at work. There have been multiple reports of unsafe behaviour made to both police and council by residents, local businesses, and support workers. Yet these concerns have been completely dismissed by councillor Massey. Even the local state Labor MP has called for improved surveillance at Musgrave Park and in West End. Local residents have voiced their frustrations. And even a community group reported multiple incidences of violence and threatening behaviour. And I quote, "The tension is still high at Musgrave Park. I fear someone is going to be seriously hurt or killed soon," end quote. But when I read last week's draft transcript of the council meeting, I couldn't believe that councillor Massey would suggest a decision about safety cameras was somehow racially motivated. This is a slight on our workers who have been out there, working to keep our community safe. Elders agree, Musgrave Park had become unsafe because of the campers. So I urge councillor Massey, through you, Madam Chair, to show more respect in her comments about these issues. But councillor Massey doesn't even have to take my word for it, Madam Chair. The councillor could review the information herself that's available on the Queensland Police website. Over the past two years, more than 80 offences have been committed in and around Musgrave Park. In the past year alone, there's been 44 offences. But here's what's interesting, Madam Chair. Permanent CCTV was installed in Musgrave Park in late December. Since then, 15 offences have been recorded and none in the past month. Councillor Massey willfully misrepresented these numbers to suggested...
Councillor Massey, I caution you for calling out. Councillor Massey? Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. What this shows is that CCTV cameras are an effective deterrent and have helped make the community safer, including the vulnerable people who are experiencing homelessness in Musgrave Park. On this side of the chamber, we believe that it is both cruel and irresponsible to allow people to live in violent, drug-affected encampments and somehow call that compassion. Yet it appears councillor Massey has adopted the same position as her mentor, who once asked, "Where are homeless people supposed to sleep if not in a public park?" Rather than supporting genuine housing solutions, the Greens have obstructed the very services that are designed to help. They claim to care about housing, Madam Chair, but they come into this place week in, week out, and they vote against housing.
One moment, please, Deputy Mayor.
Misrepresentation.
You can't claim that you haven't spoken yet this meeting. Thank you. Councillor? Deputy Mayor.
So, Madam Chair, with 25 out of 26 of our suburban safety cameras now deployed, I urge councillor Massey to get on board and nominate a location for her community.
Further questions councillor Griffiths?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, while your councillors are too scared to tell you about the volume of complaints they're getting regarding the new bus work review and how much confusion, stress, and anger it is causing our community and our residents, especially those from working-class suburbs who rely on public transport, I'd like you to answer this. There is an 84-year-old man, gentleman, who lives in my ward, who now must walk more than a kilometre and a half to his nearest bus stop and can't make it to the Maruka shops for his groceries, medication, and doctor's appointments without it becoming a three-hour round trip. Lord Mayor, why do you continue to punish those living in the outer suburbs?
Lord Mayor.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. That's an extraordinary question from someone who had the opportunity to have influence with not only one but two transport ministers. One of them was actually his local state member. And guess what? It was actually the Labor State Government that signed off on this new bus network. Now, they denied it, remember, big-money Bart, big-money Bart Mellish tried to deny it, but then we had the letter to prove it and the photo with a giant cheesy grin on his face, signing off on the new network and the new deal to boost funding for Brisbane. And so when Labor councillors get up in here and complain about it, it is disingenuous.
One moment, please. One moment, Lord Mayor. Point of order councillor Griffiths?
Gee, Madam Chair, he was talking over you after you said point of order. You didn't pull him up. My point of order is, and I think that is a blatant example of how the ruling's done this chamber, my question is about this 84-year-old man who has to walk a kilometre and a half and takes three hours to do a return trip to his, that's my question.
Councillor Griffiths, we heard your question. You don't need to repeat it. The Lord Mayor is answering the question. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. But councillor Griffiths is actually the longest-serving councillor in this place. And after, how many years is it councillor Griffiths? 22? 22 years? I would have thought that councillor Griffiths would have told the 84-year resident about the council cabs programme, because that is the suitable way to make sure that this gentleman can get to his local shops. We have a great programme that does this, and I'd love councillor Griffiths to tell that resident about the council cabs programme so that they can get access to this subsidised service.
One moment, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy? One moment, Lord Mayor, please turn off your mic. That is completely inappropriate, calling out those comments, and I heard them clearly. And as you have failed to comply with my request to take remedial action for your unsuitable meeting conduct, I hereby warn you in accordance with section 21.6 of the meeting's local law 2001 that failing to comply with the request may result in an order being issued.
Point of order?
Point of order councillor Griffiths?
Can I just put on the record that only this side of the chamber ever gets warned?
That is not a point of order, and I do not uphold your point of order councillor Griffiths.
I just want to put that on the record in the minutes.
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, if councillor Griffiths is also genuinely concerned for this 84-year-old resident, I would encourage him to give me the resident's details so that I can sort out an arrangement for this resident using opportunities like the council cabs and maybe other initiatives that are available. And I would appreciate if councillor Griffiths, instead of trying to score a political point, actually give me the resident's details and we can get in touch and make sure that they know what services are available.
He just spoke over you again, Madam Chair. You didn't pull him up.
Councillor Griffiths, that's not a point of order. I don't uphold your point of order, Lord Mayor.
My point of order is, will he take all the residents that I'm dealing with, not just this one?
I heard your point of order. I didn't know you had a second, and I didn't ask you for it. But I do not uphold your point of order, because the Lord Mayor is answering the question. Please stop repeating the question. Lord Mayor, further questions? Councillor Gibney?
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts Committee councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, the Shrinna Council is proud to support our vibrant community of artists and creatives. Can you please update the chamber on the latest funding that has become available to help our creative industries and make Brisbane's lifestyle even better?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, I thank councillor Gibney for the question. I don't think my time has reset councillor... Oh, there we go. So again, thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, a thank you to councillor Gibney for the question. There really is so much more to see and do every day in Brisbane, and that's thanks in no small part to the Shrinna Council and our continued investment in our thriving creative sector and the talented artists that bring it to life. Last month, we were proud to announce the latest recipients of the Lord Mayor's Creative Fellowships and Creative Sparks Grants. Now in its 29th year, the Lord Mayor's Creative Fellowships have provided a share of $70,000 to 10 of Brisbane's up-and-coming artists and creative professionals to develop and expand their careers. With this vital funding, Alexandra Buchanan will be able to undertake audio description training with access to arts and undertake a mentorship with Shari Indrani to enhance her skills in delivering accessible theatre and visual arts to create more inclusive experiences right here in Brisbane. Now, this is just one example of the many initiatives this Shrinna Council has funded to make our creative sector more inclusive and accessible for people of all abilities, ages, and backgrounds. Alexandra's fellowship will not only enhance her own skills, she will be able to share what she learns with her colleagues and other artists to increase awareness of how we can all work together to make art more accessible in Brisbane. Budding Brisbane actresses Lauren McNamara, Lauren Harvey, and Rebecca Schmidt have been awarded fellowships to hone their skills abroad in the UK, New York, and Prague. Broadway will be watching out for Jessica Bowman, who will be undertaking her fellowship in New York, Atlanta, and Los Angeles to take her career to the professional stage abroad. And Isabella Moore will be heading to London to develop her skills as a writer and director before she embarks on her next film project. Chelsea Shotten will be undertaking her fellowship in New York at the School of Visual Arts to gain invaluable mentorship to hone her photography and video skills. And Kristin Maloney will be embarking on a producer exchange programme with Thinkers Studio in Taiwan. Michaela Holmes is off to Coonamara in Ireland to develop her skills as a screenwriter. And Rochelle McIntyre will be heading down to Melbourne to learn the long-lost methods of silversmithing techniques. Now, through you, Madam Chair, it's a happy coincidence that all of this year's Lord Mayor's Creative Fellows just happen to be women. But I can't say I'm surprised, because Brisbane has such a wealth of talented creatives coming up through the ranks. And we are proud that these fellowships will give these talented young women a chance to leap ahead of the rest, to make big career moves, and lead the next generation of actresses, artists, and writers. We were also very excited to unveil the 2025 Creative Sparks Grants recipients last month, a programme which we've been proud to deliver for many years in partnership with Arts Queensland. 16 emerging Brisbane artists have shared in $200,000 of funding, which will allow them to produce shows, exhibitions, and projects right here at home. Ambrose Calso will be developing a new circus work titled "Minutia" to bolster Brisbane's reputation as a mecca of circus. Blue Roo Theatre Company will be developing an eight-part behind-the-scenes web series to take a look behind the curtain at their rehearsals process. Counter Pilot will be developing a transmedia performance work called "Nervous Sleepers". Ihud Joseph will be creating a multimedia exhibition, fashioning queer identities, designing representation, to celebrate and explore the culture of our LGBTIQ-plus communities, which is especially poignant given Idah Hobbit Day just recently. Chair, these are just a few examples of the 16 amazing projects that have received funding through the 2025 Creative Grants. I encourage all of you to jump online to council's website to find out more about these amazing projects. These are all names we should pay close attention to. I have no doubt that they will go on to achieve great things both here and afar to put Brisbane on the map. These grants are just one of the many ways in which the Shrinna Council supports Brisbane's thriving creative sector, and I cannot wait to see what these young artists go on to achieve. And Madam Chair, if I can just mention that this morning I was at an event where one of our former alumni, Tyrone Powell, was there, and he also is doing amazing jobs, such as our winter sessions which are coming up. So great work to all of our lovely artists in Brisbane.
Councillor Howard, your time has expired. Further questions councillor Chongwa?
Thanks, Chair. My question is to Lord Mayor. The ABC revealed last Friday that a 2024 internal Brisbane City Council review, obtained exclusively by the ABC, warned that shade cover had declined from 35% to 32% in the 10 years to 2019. This news article went on to state, this reduction torpedoed council's ambitions for a green, sorry, clean, green, sustainable Brisbane with shade cover hitting 50% in 2031.
Point of order councillor?
Wondering if there's a question in this?
Just creating, just getting context. This, this news article went on to state that this reduction torpedoed council's ambition for a clean, green, sustainable Brisbane with shade cover hitting 50% in 2031, the year before the Olympics. Lord Mayor, through the Chair, this report went on to state that, I quote, "This decline is in part due to..."
One moment councillor Chongwa. Point of order councillor Adams?
Thank you. Madam Chair, it is question time, not statement time.
Thank you. I don't uphold your point of order, but councillor Chongwa, could you please come round to the question?
Lord Mayor, this report went on to state that, I quote, "This decline..." Lord Mayor, this report went on to state that, I quote, "This decline is in part due to ongoing high levels of tree removals, removing mature trees and replacing them with juvenile trees." While these figures are for shade cover, which is slightly versioned to tree canopy cover, we can assume that the tree canopy cover is also reducing.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
My question to the Lord Mayor.
If it's the same point of order councillor.
I will resume my seat. I think I finally heard there was a question to the Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I haven't heard the question yet, but councillor, it's time for you to ask a question.
My question to the Lord Mayor through the chair, are you concerned, Lord Mayor through the chair, that we are seeing a reduction in tree canopy and shade canopy in the Brisbane City Council area at a time when this shade canopy is critical to lower daytime temperatures in a climate change crisis?
Lord Mayor.
Well, I thought that councillor Cassidy was great at cherry-picking facts and figures out of reports and ignoring the reality. But councillor Chong Wah, you've upped the ante there. The reality is, this report that's being referred to has been completely misrepresented, and it is not the reality of the situation. And so, what we're seeing here is a city that has increased its green cover. Now, what we're seeing here is the cherry-picking of the report that related to specifically in the main street trees. Street trees. Now, the reality of any kind of street trees in a built-up environment is that eventually they get to an age where they become unsafe and they need to be removed. And what do we do? We plant more. And we can't plant the same-sized tree that has been removed, so we plant many more. And that is the reality of the situation here. And so, it's been completely misrepresented. Overall, our city has increased its green cover significantly. We are now at the point of achieving our aim of having amazing green cover across forty percent of the city, and it is something that we should all be very proud of. And so, if you're just looking at street trees, you're not looking at all of the bushland reserves, you're not looking at the vast majority of trees that cover the city of Brisbane. And as councillor Wines points out, they can't see the forest for the trees. And so, cherry-picking might suit a political narrative, but it is not an accurate representation. And in fact, it was NIMAP, it was NIMAP that listed Brisbane as the greenest capital city in Australia just recently, because it is true. It is true. Now, the other thing as a local councillor, and now I've been there thirteen years as a local councillor myself, what is one of the number-one requests that you get from residents in your ward office? "Oh, there's a dangerous tree out the front of my property. Can council please inspect it and potentially remove it?" That's what residents are asking us to do, and we work really hard to get the balance right between keeping the trees that are healthy, in good condition, and also where trees are unhealthy, obviously removing those trees and planting more trees. And it is always a balance that we take very seriously. If you ask a lot of residents, they will say to you, "It is virtually impossible to get a tree removed by Brisbane City Council." I see a lot of heads nodding. What are you doing councillor Griffiths? Councillor Griffiths loves removing trees. He loves removing trees.
And through the chair, please, Lord Mayor, through the chair.
Councillor Chong Wah, through you, Madam Chair. I think you need to have a talk to councillor Griffiths about this, because he manages to get trees removed. So, don't blame us. Don't blame us. But the reality is, we work really, really hard to get that balance right. But we have been planting trees like there's no tomorrow for years and years and years. We have planted millions of trees across the city, and we have preserved and protected thousands of hectares of bushland across the city as well. And that's something we are proud of, and we are proud of our green cover, and we are determined to make sure that Brisbane is a clean, green city.
That now ends question time. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report of the ninth of June two thousand and twenty-five.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Collier.
Thanks, Chair. I move that the motion currently lying on the table, that this council requests that the Lord Mayor increase the Pathways Out of Homelessness Grant to five million dollars per year for the two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-eight grant programme come off the table for debate.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Cassidy that the motion from the fourteenth of May two thousand and twenty-four be taken off the table. This is a procedural motion, so I'll now put it to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
Aye.
The noes have it. The motion is lost. Division has been called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clerks, please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the noes have it. The voting being eight in favour and eighteen against.
The division is lost. Councillors, please resume your seats.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Collier.
I move the suspension of standing orders in order for me to move the following motion, that in the midst of a housing and homelessness crisis, I move that this council condemns the Lord Mayor for failing to increase the Pathways Out of Homelessness Programme for more than one year.
Seconded.
Has been moved by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Cassidy to suspend standing orders. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
Aye.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Collier. Councillors, ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clerks, please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the noes have it. The voting being eight in favour and eighteen against.
That is lost. Councillors, please resume your seats. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, ninth of June two thousand and twenty-five be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the Deputy Mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the ninth of June two thousand and twenty-five be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I just wanted to say, great to see baby Miles in the chamber, and love those little baby noises that come out occasionally. And I want to, as I usually do, just briefly mention the lighting up of assets as well in support of community causes. Last night, the City Hall, the Story Bridge and Kangaroo Point Bridge, the Victoria Bridge, Radcliffe Place and Tropical Dome were all lit in purple to celebrate the one hundred and twentieth birthday of the National Council of Women of Queensland, a peak body which aims to promote the participation of women in all aspects of community life. Tonight, our assets will be lit in blue to mark the first National Police Legacy Day, which recognises the dedication of the Queensland Police Service and dedication of police legacy organisations across Australia that provide support to the families of police who have been killed or injured in the line of duty. We all know about the legacy organisation that provides support to war veterans and their families, but Police Legacy performs a similar role and an important role. And thank you councillor Marks for wearing your Police Legacy badge, and I've got mine on too. But it is something that we're absolutely celebrating the work that they do and thanking them for that. Tomorrow, our assets will be lit up in maroon for State of Origin. Unfortunately, this one will be held in Perth. So, it's... Well, you know, it happens occasionally, but we'll obviously all be backing the maroons. On Thursday, our assets will be lit up in red to support World Sickle Cell Day, raising awareness and promoting treatment for sickle cell anaemia. On Friday, we'll be lighting up our assets in yellow to support the annual You Are Not Alone Fund Run, which aims to raise funds and awareness for charities which support youth mental health. On Saturday, our assets will be lit up in blue to support motor neuron disease, or MND, which is the MND Global Awareness Day, and that light-up's been organised by MND Queensland, and we thank them for their amazing work that they're Referred to in question time about what people can expect from the budget, and Labour has, once again, we've seen, tried to pull the stunt to try and pretend that they actually care about doing something about homelessness. But the reality is, if they actually cared, they would not allow people to stay in tents, in dangerous tent encampments in parks. They would seek better for them. And then they tried to pull a political motion about a programme which didn't exist under Labour, the Pathways Out of Homelessness Programme. That is something that this administration is very proud to have introduced and continue to fund, and it's a programme that provides ongoing support and has achieved amazing things in the years that it's been running. Now, councillor Howard, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand we've supported more than six thousand different people through those programmes and through the funding of Pathways Out of Homelessness. But what I can say is, rather than having political motions the day before the budget, after the budget, it's already been locked in and set, we'll actually be delivering real outcomes for our city's homeless tomorrow. There'll be real outcomes delivered, and those outcomes will involve people getting actual shelter rather than living in parks and tents. And so, that's what we aspire for homeless people in Brisbane. We aspire that they will get shelter. We will aspire that they are in accommodation, not, as lefties love to say, "Leave them alone. Leave them alone in the parks. Just leave them alone." We're not going to allow them in that situation when there's something better that we can seek for them. We should be seeking their highest good, and that is not to be left alone in parks, in tents, in dangerous tent encampments, as we've seen. Over the coming weekends, we'll see some important work being done in the Adelaide Street Tunnel. And so, Brisbane's newest and most important tunnel, which will really help relieve and decongest the bottleneck in the CBD, is almost ready, but it requires a whole range of technical tests to be done. And this is about testing all of the systems in the tunnel. And so, this effectively takes as long as it will take, because in the end, if there are things that need to be changed and modified, we have to do that. But it's the final process in the commissioning of the tunnel, and it's something that I'm very excited about. We know, I mean, if you heard councillor Murphy's explanation of why Brisbane needs a new bus network and why Brisbane Metro will help revolutionise public transport, it's about aspiring for something better for our city when it comes to public transport. If you want the nineteen ninety's bus system to continue, then vote for the Australian Labor Party, because that's all they offer. More buses on an already congested network, that won't solve anything. It just means people will get stuck on the Victoria Bridge, stuck at the Cultural Centre, stuck in the King George Square Bus Station for longer, and that is a deterrent to catching public transport. Whereas the tunnel is like the nasanex for the public transport system. You spray that up there and it decongests the network, you'll get the buses and metros going seamlessly across Victoria Bridge without stopping around the corner and into the tunnel in Adelaide Street. A smooth and seamless ride, cutting down congestion, cutting down travel time and allowing more frequent services to be put on. So, we're going to be spraying that nasanex onto the bus network, and it is going to decongest it. And the Adelaide Street Tunnel is, and I think councillor Davis, you're on a lot of that at the moment as well, or is it quadril? Quadril? But it's certainly going to help decongest the network, and that is exactly what a growing city needs, and it's exactly what we should aspire to have in a world-class city. Rapid transit that is reliable, that is quick, and that we can make transfers very quickly and easily, that's what the new busway and the new tunnel will help, the new bus system and the new tunnel will help deliver. Item A on the agenda today is the SCP for Bin Supply, Repair, Distribution and Maintenance. It seeks council approval to go to the market for a new strategic partner agreement to manage the supply, repair, distribution of household bins, as well as the maintenance of public waste infrastructure as well. The contract is a critical part of our core waste services, ensuring bins and infrastructure are delivered and repaired and maintained efficiently right across Brisbane. It will cover residential mobile garbage bins, otherwise known as wheelie bins, in all standard sizes, as well as the components like lids, wheels and axles that sometimes break and need to be replaced. It also includes the installation and servicing of public place bins using council's preferred manufacturer. Council currently has an agreement with Sulow, which expires in June next year. This new tender will ensure a seamless transition to the next phase of service delivery. As part of the new contract, we'll aim to deliver even more benefits to ratepayers, including extensions of up to ten years, securing a contractor for the long term and allowing for stability and assuredness when it comes to bin services. The encouragement of innovation, such as the use of recycled materials in bin manufacturing, and that's an important thing that we've been really pushing for. If old bins can be melted down and used to help create new bins, that is a good thing. Less waste to landfill, and it's a more sustainable contract and situation in place. Also, maintaining flexibility to expand the scope if further waste changes occur. Now, we know that we've progressively over the years rolled out additional services. We introduced the opportunity for residents to get larger yellow-top recycling bins, and a lot of residents take that up. And so, they can go, if they're filling up their normal-sized recycling bin on a regular basis, they can opt to get a larger one, and that will be delivered. That's dealt with under this contract. Obviously, we've reduced the cost of green bins in recent times, and a lot of people have taken that opportunity up, and there may be more coming soon, like tomorrow. Surprise, surprise. And so, this will allow us to be able to deliver those waste services. And as we adapt and evolve waste services and recycling services, this contract will be able to adapt and evolve with it. So, I commend this item to the chamber. Item B is the report of the Audit Committee from the fifth of June. This is presented to council in line with the City of Brisbane regulation. It is set out in the meeting minutes, sorry, as has been set out in the meeting minutes. The committee is responsible for reviewing and advising on council's internal and external financial reporting, including accounting policies, the scope of work for the performance and actions of council's internal and external auditors, the identification, effectiveness and maintenance of controls and risk mitigations to safeguard the operational risks, including...
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension, Madam Chair.
Seconded. Has been moved for an extension by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by councillor Dixon. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Sorry, the identification, effectiveness and maintenance of controls and systems to safeguard operational risks, including financial and physical resources. Our Audit Committee's job is to provide independent oversight of council's internal controls and ensure that we are addressing potential risks and protecting council and the ratepayers. and protecting council and the ratepayers. The committee was briefed by the CEO, CFO, chief legal counsel, chief internal auditor, chief information officer on a range of matters. And as always, the Queensland Audit Office was represented at the meeting and provided an update. Item C is the Logan and Gold Coast Faster Rail Project. And this is the Enter Construction Trustee leases. This project was first announced by the Palashay Government and continued under the Miles Government and now obviously the Christopher Lee Government. The project will deliver approximately 20 kilometres of new tracks and rail systems between Caraby and Beanley stations. And it also increased the rail line from two tracks to four tracks. It does a couple of things. First of all, it not only increases the number of tracks, so you can run more trains. It also takes some of the curves out of the system as well, so that the trains can operate at a higher speed. So that's important for an efficiency point of view as well. And so it's a good project and something that we support. There will also be station upgrades to improve accessibility, safety and amenity, park and ride upgrades and five level crossing removals. These are outcomes that we support. Many of the permanent works are within the state's rail corridor. But council land is needed as part of this construction of the permanent works. Naturally, we're concerned that these requirements involve the state taking part of the bushland, potentially for years, land that would need to be rehabilitated. And that's obviously our expectation. There's relatively few options available to us under the Land Act when the state desires to resume land for rail purposes. But we have raised these concerns, both with the former Labor government and now the Christopher Lee Government. And so while we certainly would never want to stand in the way of the project, we expect that there will be offsets and rehabilitation for any impact that this project has when it comes to bushland and vegetation. We've had meaningful discussions with Minister Mickelberg's department and secured a commitment that after the completion of the project, they will hand back this land to council after restoring it to its previous condition, which I think is a good outcome. Officers in News and City Projects Office will continue liaising with DTMR to explore options to avoid or reduce impacts to council green space. Item D, changes to council standing committees and membership. This is something that I flagged last week. And as we go into the 2025-26 budget, we're obviously coming through with a reshuffle of civic cabinet, including the creation of a new committee. This will be a committee that's responsible for citywide or council-wide commitment to customer service and one that councillor Hutton will chair. The new Customer Services Committee will be responsible for those, will be responsible for who, sorry, will be responsible for making, sorry, this has been incorrectly written. Will be responsible for ensuring councillors using technology to deliver better, faster and more accessible digital services to Brisbane residents, as well as overseeing, as well as overseeing our award-winning 24/7 contact centre and the more traditional face-to-face service channels that residents still engage with, in our libraries and also compliance services. The committee will be, as I said, led by councillor Hutton as chair, councillor Adam as deputy chair, and will also include councillors Atwood, Johnston, Kim and Toomey. The responsibilities of the previous City Standards Committee will be assumed by the Infrastructure and also the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, aligning our approach to other levels of government where waste and natural assets form part of the environment portfolio. Traditional council BAU activities like footpath delivery and asset maintenance will be the responsibility of councillor Murphy and the Infrastructure Committee, which will consist of councillor Parry as the deputy chair and councillors Huang, Johnston, Marks and Strunk. As critical parts of our infrastructure network, active transport will also be overseen by the Infrastructure Committee for a more integrated approach to transport. Councillor Wines will lead the Public Transport Committee, which will continue to oversee the operation of one of the largest public transport fleets in the state and the only one under local government responsibility, as well as planning for the expansion of Brisbane Metro. Councillor Toomey will join councillor Wines as the deputy chair in public transport, along with councillors Adam, Collier, Dixon and Kim. The Infrastructure and Public Transport Committee will also be responsible for advocating for funding and support in implementing the key priorities of the Race to Gold, Brisbane's Games Transport Legacy document, which is something I hope that we work to in a bipartisan way. These changes will become effective from tomorrow, 18th of June, meaning we'll enter the new budget year with our chairs and their portfolio responsibilities fully aligned. And I commend this item to the chamber.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. At the outset, can I ask that item B be taken for voting, please? Before I forget. And I'll just start from A and go through D here. The initial item, item A before us is about the significant contracting plan for the supply, repair and distribution of bins, wheelie bins. And bins have been a hot topic in this council chamber over the last few weeks and the month, last month or so. And it is timely that this SCP is coming to council the day before the council budget, where we expect to find out about Brisbane's worst-kept secret, that there'll be a citywide green bin rollout announced in the budget. We note that this contract or the proposal for tender covers three waste streams. The green one is set to get much, much busier, we suspect. And after years of campaigning and advocacy from the Labor Opposition, we are finally seeing some progress. Plenty more to be done, but some progress. So the amount of, as we know, the amount of organic waste that should be organic recycling going into landfill is the single biggest contributor to Brisbane's carbon footprint. And we have seen years of inaction from this LNP regime on that to date. We know that climate change is having a devastating impact on communities right here in Brisbane and across the region we live in. The floods in northern New South Wales just last month, like floods that we have experienced in the last couple of years, were made more significantly worse by human-driven climate change according to a new rapid attribution analysis. Research by Climate Meter suggests that the meteorological conditions, similar to those observed during that flood event, were 15% wetter and 0.75 degrees warmer compared to the past. So we should be addressing the root cause of human-induced climate change at every turn and every opportunity. And for Brisbane City Council, organic waste is a big one, is in fact the biggest one. I was a little bit disappointed to hear the Lord Mayor say just now in his opening remarks that he thought the most important aspect of this contract was melting old bins. I would think the most important aspect of this contract going forward will be the collection of organic waste and diverting that from landfill. Now, speaking of those bins, the Lord Mayor's talking about melting down. This report mentions a new 140 litre size bin. This will be the first time we've seen this size offered in Brisbane since the 1980s, I believe. I understand that currently, if you make a special request and meet very restrictive conditions, you can order a smaller bin. But it is worth noting that in the context of councils accessing state government funding to purchase new green bins and start the rollout of citywide organic collections, at the moment only garden waste. Other councils like Logan, Morton Bay and Redlands are offering the option for a smaller bin. In fact, Redlands offers as a way to waive the establishment fee for their green bin programme. So perhaps that will be something the Lord Mayor will be announcing or could take note of. Whoever takes this contract recall must be aware there will be a hell of a lot more bins to be dealing with, of course. As the Lord Mayor said a couple of weeks ago, there's so many green bins, you can see them from space. So certainly looking forward to hearing more on that tomorrow. But of course, maintaining, repairing and supplying bins is an important role of council, one of the most basics, the roads, rates and rubbish aspect of a council budget. So we support this item. Clause B, the report of the Audit Committee on the 5th of, meeting on the 5th of June. We stress and appreciate the importance of transparency and accountability in council decision-making. From the tinpot regime behaviour we have seen from the LNP lately, the value of the Audit Committee is more appreciated than ever. And as we've said in the chamber here before debating these items, the little detail we receive as councillors from deliberations and decisions at these meetings is concerning. We received a lecture a couple of weeks ago from councillor Cunningham, telling us that we as councillors have to meet statutory obligations as councillors, be across all of the information that everybody's across in this chamber to make decisions. Well, we agree. But the Audit Committee report does not provide enough details for us to be aware of exactly what was being discussed and what was provided to the committee from council. And we understand this committee is independent of individual councillors. But they are operating on the information that is given to them by the LNP. We note that the high-level minutes show that there was a discussion around the LNP council's financial statements. And there were requests for further explanations of the cash forecast projections and other forecasts as well. So obviously, some concerns being raised about the, I guess it's about $360 million worth of cash that's been spent out of cash reserves over the last two years, going from $400 million in cash reserves down to about $40 million in cash reserves. And council's extremely limited ability to go back to QTC and ask for further borrowings to plug the budget black hole that is emerging under the LNP here. So lots of questions that need answers. And we'd love to hear the answer that councillor Cunningham, as finance chair, gave to the committee. They also received an update on the 2024-5 anticipated operating result and impact on council's 25-26 budget. Obviously, we know that budget was gutted to the tune of $450 million from what the Lord Mayor himself announced at the start of the financial year. Massive cuts to projects, massive cuts to staff levels. We now know over the last 18 months, 480 less permanent staff delivering services and projects on the ground in council, but no rates cut, no reduction in fees and charges. In fact, new fees and charges, the pension attacks, as we know the LNP introduced in the current financial year we're in now. So we'll find out more tomorrow, I guess, or maybe not actually, what the Lord Mayor hands down in his so-called budget. But what we do know, from what we are able to cobble together as councillors over the last year, things are pretty dire. And, you know, after 21 years in power, we know the LNP have lost their way. Prioritising projects like glamping on Mount Cootha while the Story Bridge is falling into the river and while they're cutting basic maintenance in the suburbs of Brisbane, seeing those hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars cut in basic services as well. And I'm sure there'll be no rates relief for the people of Brisbane tomorrow. I'm sure the Lord Mayor might be able to, on his holidays in July, over to New York, on his little leadership conference in Harvard University, pick up a few trips. Maybe he won't get in. There's, of course, a ban on all visas for all foreign nationals attending Harvard University, so maybe he won't get in. So maybe he wants to read through the latest Flight Centre travel catalogue. There's a few other options, if Lord Mayor doesn't get in into Harvard, he can go to other places there. I'm sure other LNP councils have been very well-travelled. We'll give him some tips, of course, on where he could go. And I know he claimed that there was no cost to the ratepayers for that travel. But we know what LNP councils have been doing lately, when they've been doing private travel. They have been getting council to pay for their international roaming so they can continue to use their data overseas for personal use. They have, they have, councillor Johnson, I'll take that interjection. So we know there's always a cost. There's always a little detail. When LNP councillors go overseas on, even if it's on private travel, they still get the ratepayers to pick up a little bit extra. They always get the ratepayers to pick up a little bit extra. So Lord Mayor has the temerity to claim that he has a $4 billion budget. And what a joke, and he gloats about the cuts. He's been gloating about them again today. Those 480 staff that have exited the organisation are no longer providing the services that people expect from their rates. So we hope the Audit Committee takes a good, hard look at the Lord Mayor's priorities going forward. And lots more questions need to be asked. Just finally on this item as well, Chair, there's an update on fraud and corruption in there as well, or questions asked about fraud and corruption management. No further details about what they asked and what was provided. But we'd certainly be interested in what fraud and corruption they were worried about here in council. We do hope the process for the committee members is fulsome and they get the answers they require. Because we certainly, we certainly don't get the answers to questions here as councillors with statutory responsibilities, as councillor Cunningham likes to remind us of. Clause C, the Logan and Gold Coast Faster Rail Project. We support this item here, the proposed trustee leases for the Faster Rail Project on council-owned land. We acknowledge the importance of the project in unlocking additional train services and easing congestion between Brisbane and the Gold Coast. We have some concerns about the use of the council-managed land, particularly the environmental reserves and parkland that will be affected. Some of these lots are and some aren't. The project requires land from environmental reserves in Runcorn and Caraby, including parts of Wallytay Park and Voyager Street Park, as well as the buffer, an environmental buffer near the Gateway Motorway and Beanley Road.
Point of order. Point of order, councillor Collier.
Thanks. I move for an extension.
Second.
It's been moved for an extension by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Strunk. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. So there's a bit of an environmental buffer near the Gateway Motorway and Beanley Road that's required as well. So the report indicates the leases are for a four-year term at a nominal rent of a dollar per year. If only our community clubs could get that as well. Some of them paying $2,000 a year, I've got in mind, more in some of them. But anyway, a dollar a year. And the promise, as the Lord Mayor said, that the land will be returned to its original condition after use. So we know that they're not building anything on site, not keeping it anyway for infrastructure purposes, using it for project staging. But we do want to reiterate the need to get those assurances from the state government that this land will be handed back as promised in its original state before it is accepted by Brisbane City Council. Because we know trees will be removed and we shouldn't accept a block of land that comes back with a whole lot of saplings on it after a whole lot of 30 or 40 or 50-year-old gum trees have been removed from it. So we do want to see more detailed plan for that over the next few years when those blocks are returned to council. Finally, the changes to council standing committees and membership. We were made aware of these changes to the standing committees. Well, basically, as it came out, probably, I think I received an email from the Lord Mayor five minutes before question time last week where he announced these changes. So we didn't get any sort of further warning or consultation around that. So what we read before us and take from the Lord Mayor's public statements is we're getting this new committee called Customer Service Committee, where hopefully we'll finally see real-time data published on closed and broken footpaths, as we have been promised on council's website. Still hasn't happened, still is not live, despite the new website being live. And that being, that being the catalyst for that to happen. So that still needs to happen. We also hope this will allow the LNP to understand what is being neglected out in the suburbs and encourage our communities to continue to bring attention to that long grass and broken footpaths and damaged enclosed playgrounds and poor drainage causing flooding to businesses and properties. We don't know why, I mean, the Lord Mayor can, the administration can, if they want, make other changes. But that's not been well explained, I guess. But the tip is, if you're going to get rid of underperforming chairs who have stuffed up on major projects, you actually need to sack them. You don't just move them around, you don't just move the chess pieces. We have heard countless complaints about the concerns and anxieties around the bus network rollout. We've heard, this sort of, you know, seems to be the narrative now from the LNP is that it's the final bus network. The review is the final, despite being, they talk about the agreement they signed with the previous state government, despite the fine print of that, of that deal saying there needs to be yearly reviews about growth funding for new routes and new bus stops and expanding the transport network, not cutting 12 million services and leaving a full stopper after that. So there's no mention of the metro, delays after delays. We heard last week the Lord Mayor say that councillor Wines will now be in charge of expanding the metro, despite the fact that he said in the next, well, in a breath before that, that the Adelaide Street Tunnel still requires testing and require testing for the coming months. So the metro hasn't even started yet and they're talking about expanding it. I mean, God help us. And then councillor Murphy's supposed to take over the unmitigated disaster and mess that is on, that is the Story Bridge, really quite incredibly. And I guess I sort of maybe understand why councillor Wines would want to cut and run after. of maybe understand why councillor Wines would want to cut and run after sharing less than fulsome and truthful details about the damage on the Story Bridge over the last few months. Some new information's come to light today about the Story Bridge and investigations and from councillor officer to councillor officer from the CS team within council, looking at the findings from the pre and post-tropical cyclone Alfred footage. And the summary is below, and this is important for councillor Murphy to understand what he's getting himself into here. Most of the cracks had water dripping through them, which wasn't known or fully understood previously. Full-depth cracking possibly extending through the bitumen above changes the landscape on the corrosion mechanics. Now all four elements of corrosion cells present and any chance of protection from passivation by alkali concrete is gone. Doesn't sound good to me. I'm no expert in concrete, but that sounds pretty bad. By definition, next point, by definition, we are now losing steel section, bond strength and slab integrity everywhere we have a crack and water ingress. And then if you look through each section where they investigated over both sides, almost every single step has those cracks and water ingress into them. And the final point, that is essentially the new information from this inspection. Now, if that came on the 31st of March, that information, why didn't councillor Wines reveal that? When he said he tabled everything and he released all that information, why did he hide that information that by the 31st of March, they had figured out that their neglect was far worse? And the results of that neglect was far worse than they had previously even anticipated when they shut the bridge during tropical cyclone Alfred. So we had this incredible situation on the Story Bridge, red flags and warnings in 2016. In 2019, council was told they needed to replace the footpaths in their entirety within one year at 2020. And fast forward to 2025, and the latest information is that the condition and the deterioration of those footpaths is so catastrophic that they'd probably cast doubt on the ability to put a temporary fix in place before they are replaced at all. So this is the legacy councillor Wines is leaving for councillor Murphy to step into that infrastructure portfolio. You almost, you almost feel sorry for him and then you remember what he did with the metro. So it's a zero-sum game with the LNP. But cutting and running and ducking and weaving really won't cut it in the future. You can't just shuffle the pieces around. You know, they say the fish rots from the head down and all of the heads are still there. All of the heads are still there, they've just moved around a little bit. We're going to see the same cuts, the same delays. Yeah, maybe they should have, maybe they should have done a reshuffle and got some of those back benches into those positions that were slightly untainted, because they're clearly not, they're clearly not, you know, part of the inner circle of the LNP. So maybe they would have done better. Maybe they would have done better. Well, they did have some and they ditched this. So half the back bench are former chairs anyway, I guess so. Anyway, I digress. Some other changes are occurring, which feels a little bit like Back to the Future. Waste services going back to environment parks and sustainability. So many of the changes we see, both in the news branch area and within what used to be called asset services and then city standards and field services, and as they go back to something that they were 10 years ago or even 25 years ago, when you speak to council officers, it's sort of billed as a change, but it's in fact going back to something that worked a whole lot better than the changes that were made. And it just goes around and around in circles. And it just shows that the changes that we've seen under successive LNP chairs of these committees haven't worked. Service levels have been dropping, budgets have been cut and staff have been shed. So what we don't want to have is an item discussing the jobs of LNP councillors. What we need to be discussing are the services that we should be delivering to the people of Brisbane. So I'll leave it there.
Further speakers, councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item A, the significant contracting plan for our bins, and also item D, the new committees. Now, Madam Chair, after listening to that diatribe from councillor Cassidy, we will not be lectured about bins. This is the same councillor Cassidy who at the last election got up and told the people of Brisbane that your red-top bin was going to be collected fortnightly. So can I tell you, he knows nothing about waste collection? And can I say, I'm very excited to see that our side of the chamber does know about waste collection, knows about how tricky it is, and knows just how to get it right. Yeah, councillor Cassidy has exited the chamber, so that's no surprise. He clearly doesn't like the truth. But, Madam Chair, I do want to talk about this arrangement. This means that we will provide the full suite of mobile garbage bins, also known as MGBs in the industry. This goes for all of our bins across three waste streams and will also maintain the flexibility to expand as new waste types appear and also as community need emerges. This contract covers the repairs and replacement of bin components like cracked lids, missing wheels and broken axles. It also covers the installation, removal and maintenance of our bins in parks, bus stops and malls. This contract will ensure that it is all done well, because when a bin is damaged, missing or delayed, residents notice. That's why the Shrimmer Council is focused on delivering long-term sustainable partnerships that get the fundamentals right. This programme will be running for an initial five years, with the new arrangement will have the ability to extend to 10 years. This allows our industry to make significant investments in fleet, staff and manufacturing capabilities, all to support our city's growing network and of course, delivering the best possible service. Council's current contract is with Sulo and it expires next year, and this new tender process will ensure that the market brings forward new ideas, a key part of keeping our city clean, green and sustainable. We want to make sure that our residents have the confidence that when they request a new bin or put in a bin repaired, they will receive it without hassle. And this procurement does exactly that. Now, Madam Chair, I also want to talk about item D, which is the proposed changes to council standing committee. Obviously, today marks the end of my time as Chair of City Standards Committee, and it has been an absolute honour to lead this portfolio that deals with the everyday essentials of keeping our city moving, from graffiti removal and litter control to park maintenance, waste collection, road resurfacing and local law compliance. As I prepare to take on the new role as Chair of Customer Services, I want to take a moment to reflect and give thanks to those who have given me incredible support in this role. City Standards is one of the hardest-working and most humble portfolios in this council. It is the engine room, they are the doers, the air taskers of councillors, as I have named them before, and I have thoroughly enjoyed being part of this programme. When I first started, I knew it was going to be a challenge, but what I didn't expect was just how much I would love it. From potholes to playgrounds, street trees to waste, it has been a privilege working alongside...
One moment, please, councillor Hutton. Sorry to interrupt, but there's a lot of conversations about three or four going on in the chamber, and I do ask councillors to take the conversations outside if you have to. We cannot hear the speaker. Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. From potholes to playgrounds, street trees to waste, it has been a privilege working alongside these dedicated officers and teams to make it all happen. And what a year it has been. It has not been business as usual, but perhaps the most significant point was during Cyclone Alfred, where our teams went beyond the call of duty. From debris clearing and safety checks to compliance coordination and on-the-ground logistics, our City Standards team were among the first in and the last out, working around the clock to support residents, restore services and keep our neighbourhoods safe. I want to say a heartfelt thank you to every officer who stepped up. Your professionalism, speed and care made a huge difference. I personally want to thank the executive team and the general managers who have guided and supported this programme through both the calm and the crisis. Kristin Booth, Louise Keane, Sam Girro, Anthony Sibber, Mitch Barlow, Adrian Patterson, Matt McCarthy, Jamie Hall, Andrew Nicholas, Pip Hold, Kirsty Cronin and all of your incredible teams. Today marks a new chapter, and I am so, so very excited to be part of the new programme. It is going to make our city the most livable, responsive and community-focused in Australia. Thank you again to the Lord Mayor for his trust in me and to the teams I've worked with in City Standards for your dedication and drive. I'm ready to bring that same energy and focus to the customer service portfolio, and I look forward to delivering for the people of Brisbane.
Further speakers, councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Could I ask that item B be taken, sorry, item for voting purposes?
Yep, it has been councillor Strunk.
Oh, has it already? I didn't hear. B was. No, that's good. Well, maybe I need some hearing aids. Anyways, that was the, I'm going to speak on items A and B, but that was a great retirement speech from the Chair of City Standards. And I wonder if all the other, all the other retiring chairs are going to come up and speak so eloquently and thanking all those staff that actually helped them run that portfolio. We do have some great staff. Don't know about some of the chairs, but we have some great staff. Anyways, item A, well, it's about time, it's about time that the Shrimmer administration caught up with green waste. When you think only 30% of the homes have green waste bins already, there's a lot more. And I just assume that aerial photograph from the satellite, there's going to be enough to go around, right? And it's really important that green waste, it's really a shame that they didn't go all the way to the organic, you know, food organic waste, but it's really important, especially in my ward, which is called Forest Lake, where about, well, about half the homes actually in the suburb of Forest Lake have a lot of trees and a lot of leaves and all sorts of other things that come off the trees as well, that actually flow into the stormwater drains into the lake. So it's really good. Listen, I'm sure my residents will be very happy to have these green waste bins, and I think you'll be able to take them on board or you can opt out, I think probably, or there'll be some arrangements anyways, I'm sure, if you don't want one. But I just hope they all take them up, because it's really important that we keep the lake as clean as we can from all those nutrients that flow in and cause algae and all sorts of other problems, right? There's one thing that you should have a look at, if you haven't already have a look at in the rollout, and that is the Department of Housing or other social housing operators who don't allow, in most cases, don't allow their tenants to actually take up green waste bins, for whatever reason, I don't know. But there's probably tens of thousands of houses, or at least 10,000 houses if not a lot more, right across Brisbane that are operated by the Department of Housing that won't, that maybe miss out on this new initiative. And I hope that, I hope some work's being done there to correct that. The other thing is that, now, I think I'll leave it there and then move on quickly on to B, which is the audit. And I wanted to talk about the CEO's part of that audit. Again, we don't know in detail what she talked about, we just have the headlines, basically. But the management, the asset management that she talked about in that audit report, right, really, I'm sure she was absolutely gobsmacked when she took over to find out that the Story Bridge, one of our biggest assets, hadn't been looked after. And of course, she's now landed with trying to navigate how we're going to restore that bridge, which is 80 years old. The other, the other, the other things that she should probably have a look at, if she's listening, is the School of Arts, which has been empty for, I think councillor Maddick was the last one to actually get some funding, right, all those years ago for it, and then we didn't spend it. We got the funding in the budget, but then we didn't spend it, right? So it's still empty, it's still empty. And of course, all those Bulls clubs. Amazing, you know, whether it's the Stafford Bulls Club or the one on the Casia Ridge, the one at South Brisbane, we really don't look after these assets. I think, I don't know what we have against Bulls, but it seems that we don't really care for them to continue on. I mean, I was up at a Bulls club up in Ipswich on the weekend, and I'll tell you what, that council looks after them, I'll tell you right now. They make sure that the Lisor is doing the right thing. And the one at Goodna that I was at, I'll tell you what, it's really well looked after and I was really, really happy to...
Councillor Strunk, your time has expired.
Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers. Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item B and D. First to item B, a considerable amount of work is done behind the scenes by our independent Audit Committee, Madam Chair, to ensure that there is effective management of this council on behalf of the rate payers of Brisbane. The Audit Committee is an advisory committee of council, and it's bound and established pursuant to the City of Brisbane Act and the City of Brisbane Regulation. The Audit Committee operates independently and free from any political interference, as it should, or the presence of councillors. One of the functions of the committee is to consider the continuous improvement of council systems, processes and controls. The current Audit Committee members were appointed by a way of an independent external recruitment process. There's nothing secretive about the meetings. The committee enforces accountability. Every action is identified and has a clear outcome or process, and dates are monitored. As you can see, as we can all see from the minutes, representatives from the Queensland Audit Office are always in attendance at these meetings. This is to ensure that the requirements are being enforced and adhered to, as well as to make certain that any preparation is occurring for the end of the financial year. At this most recent meeting, some of the matters discussed were the approval of the 25-26 annual internal audit plan, as well as a progress update in relation to the approved plan for this financial year. I'd like to offer my thanks once again to the committee, who, despite comments from the opposition, continue to provide continuing assistance to ensure council gets the best outcome for all rate payers. On item D, the changes to council standing committees and memberships reflect the new Customer Services Committee to be chaired by councillor Hutton. The change reflects the administration's ongoing commitment to delivering the best possible and most efficient services for Brisbane residents. We want council to be easy to work with, and we want to improve council's overall efficiency by using digital capabilities and channels to better serve our customers and employees. Other portfolio responsibilities have also been realigned, including responsibility for city resilience being transferred to Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee. I'd like to place on record my appreciation for the work of Howard and the entire City Resilience Branch. Their efforts play a vital role in ensuring that our city always remains prepared, adaptable and strong in the face of climate challenges. Madam Chair, I'm honoured to be a member of the Lord Mayor's Civic Cabinet and continue to serve in the role of Finance and City Governance Committee Chair. The committee has an essential role in supporting and enabling the efficient functioning of council and maintaining and enhancing the financial position of council, and I commend these changes to the chamber.
Further speakers, councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I rise to speak on all four items, if I have time. I do want to start with the changes to the standing committees, yet again, yet again.
The second one?
No, look, councillor Massey's, it's been the second one. I reckon there's been more than a dozen, a dozen or more since I've been the councillor here. And every time, instead of making things better, this LNP administration, and the Lord Mayor's gone already, he's had probably an hour of council and he's had enough for the day, the part-time Lord Mayor. But this administration, the one thing you can count on is they will botch, completely botch, the organisational and the governance arrangement for Brisbane City Council. Now, we know that councillor Marks, you know, the former City Standards Chair, which is now being abolished, absolutely decimated the operational part of, heart of council, when there was a major restructure a few years ago. And that's just continuing. We're now seeing Brisbane City Council split the operational areas of council even further, which will have a deleterious impact on service delivery. There is absolutely no question about this. So the person who has been in charge of the everyday operations of Brisbane City Council, road works, tree works, is councillor Hutton. Councillor Hutton, who has managed to see road projects not delivered, thousands of trees waiting to be planted, potholes all over Brisbane, Cyclone Alfred storm clean-up not happened, drainage works being rolled over or cut, and you name it, it just goes on and on and on. Guess what she's been put in place, in charge of? The new Customer Services, the Customer Services Committee. So here's... So here's something that's really, really interesting. On almost every single log job we do nowadays, we get a response without a KPI. And in the 17 years that I have been a councillor, the one thing that council has done is provide ward offices and residents with some basic information about when their request will be actioned. Under councillor Hutton, this important service standard, a transparent and accountable service standard, has been abolished. It's just gone. And now the standard line you get is, we are unable to provide you with a KPI. So that is, that is the quality of the person being put in charge of the city, of the Customer Services Committee, the person who has overseen its decline to the point where council can't tell you when they're going to do something. We know, because we're putting in complaint after complaint, that it's taking up to 18 months to have a tree trimmed or planted. Now, that's standard. I've got a resident who's two years plus, and it's just excuse after excuse from council, and again, that's councillor Hutton. So, you know, it's a bit like pulling the serial killer in charge of the knife workshop, isn't it? I mean, it's like, what's going to happen here? They'll just lower standards yet again, lower them, lower expectations, lower the community's expectations yet again, because that is what the Shrinar administration has done for years now, and it is getting worse. The other changes, this one's a bit more interesting. It's a Tweedle Dum, Tweedle Dee kind of scenario, I think, with respect to the swaps between transport and infrastructure. And it's hard to know who's botched their portfolio worse. Councillor Wines, who's been asleep while the Story Bridge has started crumbling and bits dropping off into parks and into the river, or councillor Murphy, who seems completely deluded about how bad his new bus network is. This is the councillor who last week said a number of things that I've been sharing with my residents, who now have to walk a kilometre or more to get to a local bus. He just tells the elderly people to walk further. Or the schoolchildren, who no longer have a local bus service that runs near them, well, they should just get on a school bus that doesn't exist. So when the chairperson of council, who's in charge of the bus review, spends $1.6 billion plus on a new metro and a new bus network, and yet at least 15% of people in Brisbane get a better, get a worse bus service, worse bus service, you've got to scratch your head and go, how did that happen? How did anybody over there think it was okay to have a worse bus service?
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers? Councillor Wines.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. I rise to speak to Items C and D in today's report. And before I do, I just want to respond to some of the comments made earlier. The first, the first one I'll make is, it's always interesting when councillor Johnston always has so much advice, but we know that out of the first hint of trouble and the first hint of criticism, councillor Johnston runs away. And once again, to sit here and call people names and attempt to diminish people in this place, knowing full well that she would find it beyond difficult to do the things that we do here in the majority side, and that it must be very, very easy in permanent independence. And it must be very, very easy to sit as far away from decision-making in the city as possible. And I think that sometimes some of her comments are lost, that that's lost on her, that councillor Johnston has chosen a position where she can, all she needs to do is complain and criticize the people who are in fact doing the work to address the concerns that she routinely raises. The other thing I need to respond to is, of course, some of the jurors' comments made by councillor Cassidy regarding the Story Bridge, where once again, he cherry picks and reframes emails to suit his political argument, to suit his Labor Party partisan argument, and not the facts of the matter. The email he read out, the email that he read out, the final line in it says, "This information is new to us." That email is dated March 27, and the storm that exposed those issues was March 5. So once again, we had two reports in that period that exposed those issues, and another dozen reports that we tabled in this place that did not speak to those issues. So once again, it's because of the diligence of this organization, we found those issues and we are addressing them. They were not, once again, I hear someone to my right saying something like, "What?", which must, of course, mean that they are surprised about the contents of the reports again, because we know they don't read them. They know they don't read them. And even this email has been taken out of context. It says, "This information is new information." That is information not in earlier reports. Anyway, back to the substantial points of the report. But once again, you cannot ignore the facts that councillor Cassidy cherry picks his reports to suit his argument and ignores the vast bulk of the information that's provided to both him and all residents of Brisbane, and will be going up on our website that's being prepared as well. So on the topic of Item C, it's a submission to approve entering into a lease arrangement with the state government to support the ambition of faster rail between Brisbane and the Gold Coast. A state government initiative, and much of the land in question is under a form of estate, we hold it in state under trust, but it is in our loving care. And so we are ensuring that whatever uses are made of it, while they are using it for their upgrade, it will be returned as it was. So the rates of rent have been discussed in this place at a dollar per year, and that it is an ambition of this council to get our transport system moving. And while links between the Gold Coast and Brisbane City may seem beyond the remit of Brisbane City Council, it speaks to one of our core values, to get you where you want to go sooner and safer on a safe and efficient network across all modes. And this is one way that we're able to support another government in doing that. So it has been an idea that's been bouncing around for a little while, and I just want to recognize the Chris O'Neil government's commitment to continuing these works to support what is a growing public transport network. And as all councillors here know, the Gold Coast likes to pretend it's another city, but it's really just the outer southern suburbs of Brisbane. They're trying to rub themselves in the glamour of our own Olympics and draw things away from us, but we know, at the end of the day, it's really just a retirement village for Brisbane people. Ultimately, the state land that will be held, it's funny, there was an interjection, "It's like Florida," if councillor Murphy, remarkably so, that's why there's a place called Florida Gardens, but we won't get into that. Officers in our news environment, natural environment, water and sustainability, and our city projects office have continued to work with DTMR to ensure that this space is used for what is, for what is necessary for, and then returned to us to a same standard, to the same standard which we left them, which is the ambition. So we maintain and improve our natural spaces while improving our transport network.
Point of order, Chair. Point of order, councillor Dixon.
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
Has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Givney that the meeting adjourned for a period of 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it, the meeting will be adjourned when all councillors have left the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. I'll just start, if I can move Item A and D to be taken in voting for Seri item. Thank you. I'll speak both to Items B and D briefly. For the audit report, this report obviously does not mean meet the standard for effective council oversight. Once again, councillors are being asked to note a document that contains very little in the way of usable insight, no actionable intelligence, and zero visibility on key risks and issues. This isn't transparency, it's a tick box for the LNP council. Instead of being presented with something meaningful and detailed reporting that will help us collectively do our jobs better, we're giving vague one-line summaries that obscure more than reveal. And the question again arising, arises, if there's nothing to hide, why hide it? Let's not forget, it's under the scrutiny of this very Audit Committee that council made the whoopsies of the $400 million in cuts within 12 weeks of the 2023-24 budget passing. And we know, just recently, that there's another $500 million in cuts forecast for the forward estimates of the next four years. These aren't minor adjustments, they're serious sweeping decisions with real impacts on services, staffing, infrastructure, and long-term planning. And this Audit Committee, while it gives us the lines that they talked about, gives absolutely no insight. And of course, this isn't an isolated issue, it reflects a broader pattern of behaviour under the LNP-led council, where transparency is treated as a nuisance, not a democratic obligation, where oversight is limited to ceremony rather than substance. To note these reports would imply that they meet a baseline standard of transparency and relevance, and these clearly don't. Now to Item D. This is a major restructure. Dismantling the City Standards Committee is a significant change to council operations. And yet, of course, we initially were left in the dark, and that is, of course, until the Lord Mayor's speech last week. Since then, obviously, there's been no real communication apart from the LNP spin that we hear constantly. It's about service and technology and delivery. And in full honesty, I hope that's all true. But, 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 and I think you can fill the rest in. And while it's good that it's here for debate this week, so statements can be made on the record. Let's be honest, with the mega majority of the LNP on council, we know this restructure is already a done deal. But it's still important for me to get on the record why there are some concerns about this move. City Standards is one of the few places that we could, sometimes, track the delivery of basics, maintenance, rapid response teams, missed bin pickups, overgrown footpath, broken infrastructure. These are the everyday issues that residents raise with us constantly. I don't think just in the Gabba Ward, but across the city. With all the budget cuts we're seeing in central services, we already know that council isn't getting this part right. I know today there's been a lot of talk of trees. I'd like to put on the record again, the biggest difference this year about tree maintenance, when a tree is removed, is now we do not get told when the tree will be placed. In fact, sometimes we're told we could take up to a whole year. So, so much for all of the Lord Mayor's statements earlier today about trees and canopy cover. Now, we know that some of the City Standards responsibilities are being carved up and scattered across other committees. On top of that, there's a reshuffle of committee chairs. And to me, I'm suspicious of further diluting oversight and weakening continuity. Of course, this is happening all before the budget. A budget that, if the last few years are anything to go by, is more about photo ops and political theatre than real investment for our communities. We're seeing things potentially be hidden from that budget for us to have to investigate and navigate. These 11th-hour changes will make it more difficult to trace where the money's going, what's being prioritized, and what's quietly being put aside.
Thank you, councillor Massey. Can I just confirm you want all items taken separately for voting? Thank you. Any further speakers? Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I rise to speak on Items A and D of the E and C report. Firstly, with regards to Item A, the corporate procurement arrangement for bin supply, repair, distribution, and maintenance. Council currently has a strategic partner arrangement with SULO, which has been mentioned, and this CPA adopts that same sort of strategic partner model, commencing with a five-year term with the potential for an extension to 10, with the aim of attracting new ideas from the market, who will deliver a full suite of services, from the manufacture of the wherely bins to the repairs of them, and of course, the cleansing of them. It's designed to give council flexibility to meet waste needs as they evolve. As councillor Hutton said earlier, this arrangement really underpins our city waste management system. These are everyday services that our residents rely on, and we want to make sure that the services are delivered with consistency, with efficiency, and of course, with value. Item D documents changes to council standing committee membership. While the membership of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee remains unchanged, the scope of the committee's work has now broadened. So not only will we retain the existing areas that we had, we will be including now in our, in our remit, we'll have drainage come back into the, into the portfolio, but we'll also now oversee and manage waste management and resource recovery for Brisbane residents. And I'd like to thank councillor Hutton for her excellent stewardship in that area. And before her, of course, councillor Marks, who I know is very interested in the topic and pleased that this has come to our committee for considerations. We will look after citywide litter prevention and maintain and enhance Brisbane's, as I said, drainage network. We'll prepare council and the community to minimise the impact of severe weather and natural disasters. And can I put on record my thanks to councillor Cunningham, the deputy mayor, for the great work that she did, certainly over the last two severe weather events that we had here in Brisbane, particularly the advancements that we made in dealing with tropical cyclone. We'll be ensuring the coordination with the state emergency services during localised incident and disaster response activities, and deliver on council's Olympic host contract commitments and obligations relating to the portfolio. Of course, we'll still have oversight of Brisbane Sustainability Agency and City Parkland Services, and I'm looking forward to working with those two agencies as we move forward. Madam Chair, I'd like to thank the committee that we have. I look forward to working with them all with the new arrangements. I'm excited about the prospects that we have in front of us, and I commend it to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to briefly speak on clause C in relation to the land and the Logan-to-Gold Coast Faster Rail project. We are supporting this clause today. And however, I just wanted to also place on record the support that there is in the community for the level crossing removal in Carabbe Station. I know this is really well awaited by our residents, and also just wanted to farewell some of the shops that'll be removed as a result of this project, including Eva Chow Podiatry, which I know is very loved by local residents. But aside from that as well, this connection actually goes all the way to Carawatha Forest. And we understand that there were some words remarking how it was bought under bushland buyback scheme, and residents just want to make sure, including stakeholders like the Carawatha Forest Protection Society, that they are included in any future consultation processes. And we wanted to note that nice and early, because while we do support this clause here today, if anything does happen further down the line, we would love for there to be more consultation and for us to be notified to any changes that may happen in Carawatha Forest, given that council does have a role to play in that area of our suburb in our board. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor, sorry, Dixon.
That's all right. Chair, I wish to speak, so, gosh, we're all got tongue-tied here today, aren't we? So I wish to speak on Item D, Chair, just on it briefly. As someone who's sat on the Transport Committee since I joined this place nearly two years ago, which has gone very fast, I'm very excited to welcome councillor Wines and councillor Toomey to the committee. It's an interesting one to be a part of with the implementation of the metro. Each week, we always have very interesting discussions in the Transport Committee, whether it's about ferry terminals, active school travel, or even a few weeks ago, we spoke about traffic management for major events. So it's also very exciting that we are going to be having the Brisbane New Bus Network soon, and change can always be daunting, but it is, I guess, great that we are joining other world cities with two-seat journeys. So also through you, Chair, I just want to say councillor Hutton has done an incredible job in City Standards, and she will bring her energy and enthusiasm to customer service, the new committee. There's some exciting times on the horizon for council's customer service, and I'm excited to be part of a team that is service-focused as we adapt to the challenges of being a growing city. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I rise to, there's a lot of things I want to talk about in this here.
which I constantly find disturbing, given that our role as councils is to actually oversight what this administration is doing. And once again, I notice the Lord Mayor is not in the room, particularly for the E and C debate. I understand him not being in the room for all the other debates, I can sort of understand it, I can't understand him not sitting through his own reports debate. As Councilor Cassidy said before, this audit report is not transparent, and it's hiding what is happening in council. And I remain very concerned about how out of touch this council is, or this administration is. We know we are $6 billion in debt, and what I would like to know from the finance chair has the QIC, Queensland Investment Corporation, said that it will not lend us any more money, because that's what I understand they have told us. We know that we've had 480 permanent staff cut, we know there's hundreds of casual staff that have been cut. The Story Bridge, in the Lord Mayor's own words, is in a catastrophic condition. Morale by our staff and through our staff is extremely low. There's paranoia in our executive staff, and staff are really tired of the constant changes and lack of leadership shown by this administration. Bus services and bus stops have been cut, tree services have been cut, library services have been cut. Everywhere I look, everywhere I go, there's cuts through this organisation, and yet I hear the mayor and deputy mayor stand up in some delusional state and say how great things are. They obviously aren't meeting with the community or meeting with council officers who know that this isn't true. The other area that just sees no resources is that of our 600 community facilities, which we all own as a city, the majority of those are not accessible, and we have no desire to make them accessible. But we will send our chairperson over to Paris to talk about what an accessible city Brisbane is. The hypocrisy just drives me demented. Residents know this Lord Mayor and his LMP team are not in touch with the community. They are just not meeting community expectations. Secondly, I speak about item D, the audit committee. And the audit committee, I'd like them to investigate the Lord Mayor's Suburban Initiative Fund, of which we receive about $580,000 a year. I'd like the audit committee to make it transparent to us, because Councilor Cunningham won't, why out of that committee's $580,000, we pay $60,000 to council, to PPI and City Standard staff, just to manage that money. We then pay 11% of that money for project management. And for me, I'm paying for two designs, approximately $40,000 each, two designs to get a two-foot pass designed up. That's not delivered, that's just the design. You know, it's incredible, the amount of waste that's happening in this organisation, incredible, and yet there's no one from the LMP side who's prepared to speak up. They're all just sitting there, accepting it and saying, that's okay, that's fine. You know, what disturbs me is that the Lord Mayor will write to residents, say, your council has been given $580,000 to build footpaths and do this and that. What he doesn't tell them is, he takes back $80,000 in that money just to run the organisation. So this is just one big con, and it's a con that keeps happening over and over and over again. I'm really concerned about the way this administration's running this. I don't believe we're running it well for the city, I do not believe we're delivering well for the city, and I know residents are missing out. I saw Councilor Cunningham approach another councillor, so I look forward to hearing that other councillor speak.
Further speakers? Councilor Adams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I rise to speak if I have time on all of the items before us today. I'm hearing a ha-ha from Councilor Griffiths, the man who couldn't lie straight in bed, let alone speak straight in council. No councillors here standing up, and we've had many councillors stand up here today. But the one thing that we don't actually lower ourselves to is the name-calling that we've seen on the other side today. I've been in this place now for nearly 18 years, and had the great pleasure of being in cabinet for 15 of those years, a pleasure that Councilor Griffiths was never afforded while he was in administration, I can assure you. And the one thing that is constant, and we all...
One moment, please, Councilor Adams. Point of order, Councilor Griffiths?
Councilor Adams called another councillor a groin rub in this chamber, it's on the record.
Yeah, that is not a point of order.
Sorry, did...
Don't call out, that is not a point of order.
Thank you. She's explained a thousand times what I've said, and they still misrepresent it, I'm not even going to bother. What we did here today was a councillor called...
One moment, Councilor Adams.
Staff have asked me if it's acceptable to call other staff groin rubs after watching this meeting.
Wait for me to call, thank you. Wait for me to call your point of order. You are not to get... A point of order is not getting up and debating what someone has said, I've told you endless times, and you have been in this chamber long enough to know that if you have any comments to say, you can wait until it's your turn or do it in general business. Now, stop interrupting, please, and calling out as well when someone else is on their feet. We sat there and listened to your whole speech without interruption. Councilor Adams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. They don't like listening to me speak because they don't like the truth because it hurts. What we heard today was a councillor stand up and call a chair a serial killer. We also heard him call two of our male councillors Tweedle Dum and Tweedle Dee. Because the chairs have changed. Now, the one thing we know that is constant in this place is change. And the chairs, the chairs' roles, the chairs' responsibilities, change constantly to meet the changing demands of the city. And these changes we see here today in item D are the changes that are going to bring customer service to the absolute fore in our city. And just because it's changed, doesn't mean that it's changing for the worse. These changes are made, we have a new CEO who's come in and had a look at the organisation, has come up with some ideas of our own, obviously discussed these with cabinet, not that I am in those discussions anymore, but I think that what you have before you today with the changes to these services is an outstanding way to move forward for Brisbane. Some of the portfolios are very big, and some of the chairs have some changes to get ready for info sessions, I don't envy them that as well, but I am confident that my former cabinet colleagues are going to do extremely well, and we look forward to the budget coming down tomorrow. We also look forward to the fairy tales that we'll hear from those on the opposite side who do not know how to read budget books. And they continue again and again and again.
One moment, please, Councilor Adams. Councilor Massey, I caution you. Remain quiet while another councillor is having their turn. Councilor Adams?
Year upon year upon year, the documents that very clearly lay out the financial situation of these councils are misrepresented, and we heard it here again today from Councilor Griffiths. $6 billion worth of debt, false, absolute outright false, 3.68 in net debt.
And I do caution you, Councilor Strunk, you've done it several times during the chamber, this meeting, stop calling out. Councilor Adams?
I always listen very politely to Councilor Strunk when he speaks. It's disappointing he can't give me the courtesy back as well. But as we know, the truth hurts, and the truth is that mistruths and misleading statements are what the opposition run on, and they will run on for the next two weeks, I am sure. But what we have before us today is a sound way forward, a fantastic way forward for our city, for the services that our city needs. With chairs, I know, are going to be so enthusiastic, because change is as good as a holiday as well. Those that are staying in situ have also got some new parts to their roles as well. I'm sure they're going to enjoy that, and I support these items to the chamber.
Further speakers? No further speakers, we'll now put those items to the vote. We'll go with item A, all those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division. Division has been called by Councilor Massey and seconded by Councilor Chongwa. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 22 in favour and two abstentions.
That item is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Your microphone, yeah. Point of order, Councilor Johnson?
Yes, Madam Chair. I seek leave to suspend standing orders in order to move an urgent motion calling on council to provide the council budget book and annual plan in a hard copy to all councillors tomorrow before 11am or at 11am, as historically has been done.
Seconded. Has been moved by Councilor Johnson and seconded by Councilor Massey to suspend standing orders. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Seconded.
Division called by Councilor Johnson and seconded by Councilor Griffiths. Eyes to my right and nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 7 in favour and 17 against.
So that motion is lost. Councillors, please resume your seats. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division. Division has been called by Councilor Cassidy and seconded by Councilor Massey. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and 7 against.
The ayes have it. Councillors, the ayes have it, please resume your seats. The motion is carried. We'll now move to item C. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. We'll now move to item D. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division. Division called by Councilor Massey and seconded by Councilor Chongwa. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 21 in favour, 2 against and 1 abstention.
Motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 10th of June, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Councilor Murphy and seconded by Councilor Parry that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 10th of June 2025, be adopted. Councilor Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have an exciting update for the chamber before we get into the report. The Kangaroo Point Bridge has been awarded the 2025 Australian Institute of Landscape Architects Award for Queensland Infrastructure. And Councilor Davis was there at the awards just last week to represent the Lord Mayor. She watched Aspect Studios accept the award for their work as landscape designers on the project, and anyone who has been to the bridge would attest to what an incredible job that the landscape architects have done in making that bridge seem like it's always been there and always belonged there. And that is the amazing work that landscape architects do all around the country, but particularly the great job that Aspect Studios has done here in Brisbane. From here, Kangaroo Point Bridge will now progress to Ayla's National Awards in October, so hopefully, Councilor Davis, you'll hopefully be able to attend that, you know, wherever it is in the country. But, look, we're absolutely thrilled that this iconic bridge has been formally recognised for its world-class design. We all know that this bridge has been a roaring success, that it has blown past any and all patronage expectations, Madam Chair, so what a great outcome for Aspect Studios and a great outcome for the project team that worked with them to deliver that. Madam Chair, this is my last report in the chamber as transport chair for the city, ending five years in the role, and I just wanted to take a few moments to reflect on some of the things we've been able to do together as part of the Shriner administration for transport in this city. It's been a busy five years, but we've been able to do a lot, Madam Chair. We are seeing under this Lord Mayor's leadership Brisbane's bus network move from that of a big country town to an emerging global city. We all, well, we don't all, but some of us remember Graham Quirk in this place talking about Brisbane as Australia's new world city, and seeing our transport network mature over the last five years, and seeing Brisbane residents being willing to go on that journey of change has been extremely gratifying. Of course, we've seen the patronage uplift in Brisbane Metro on the M2 service, that is something we're very, very proud of. We're very proud to bring the most significant reforms to Brisbane's bus network since 2008. And, you know, I'd reflect on why that hasn't happened, Madam Chair, and the reality is that reform isn't done because it's not a very popular thing to do, and generally politicians like to do things... very popular thing to do. And generally politicians like to do things that are popular and there are no votes in difficult reforms. But it doesn't mean it's not the right thing to do. And one of the things that I love about this team and this Lord Mayor is that this team is always prepared to do the right thing even when it isn't the popular thing. And so it is with bus network reform. And we will see the results of that, that councillor Wines will very ably deliver on the thirtieth of June. In 2021, we started to redesign and review this bus network. And then between July and December 2022, we undertook that consultation with the Brisbane residents. And that has been and remains award-winning. You know, throughout it all, Madam Chair, it would not have been possible without the fantastic support of the team within the Brisbane Metro project and city projects. I'm very thankful to the former divisional manager, Scott Stewart, the current acting divisional manager, Tanya Orr, Stephen Hammer, who's led major projects, ably supported by Alan Evans, the comms team, Amy and Laura. They've done a tremendous job on leading this project both within and without in the city of Brisbane. And it will be, when it is commissioned, an absolute triumph for public transport in this country and an example of bus rapid transit, how it should be done to the world. And I'm very, very proud of the work that we have done here. There's been a lot of other things I could reflect on, Madam Chairman, the green bridges, e-mobility, ferries, all these sorts of things. But this is, I think, something that I'm very, very proud to say I was able to work on for the last five years. And we'll all get to see the results and the proof in the pudding very, very shortly. Madam Chair, with those few words, I know I'm running out of time, I'll just say it's been an absolute pleasure. I'll be Transport Chair, very much looking forward to taking over as Infrastructure Chair and the great work that councillor Wines has done there. And I will leave further debate to the chamber. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnson.
Yes, Madam Chairman, I rise to speak on item A and B and ask that the items are taken seri item for voting purposes. Very briefly, on the cultural centre station upgrade, I just want to put on the record probably one of the most disturbing sort of things to come out of the bus network review, which is the big fat fib from the LNP, time and time again, that there will be at the same platform changes for people when they're transferring from a local bus service to the metro. Now, that's not the case for most buses on the south side, because you will hop off the metro at the cultural centre bus station. But if you are hopping on a local bus connection to the south side, you have to walk approximately five hundred, six hundred metres out into the open, it's not undercover, all the way across a major intersection at Gray Street to platform three. So many residents are going to struggle because they are not same platform changes. And worse still, the council officers who came out to see me a couple of weeks ago told me it was only buses to Dutton Park and Highgate Hill that would be impacted by this. And I said, oh, so which bus services? And then they rattled off a bunch of bus services that come to Yoronggo, Yorongpili. So I just want to put on the record that even the flagship of the metro project is going to make it harder for residents trying to get a local bus service connection to the metro. It is not going to be seamless. Residents are going to be forced, elderly residents are going to be forced to walk hundreds of metres in the rain, in the baking sun, just to transfer onto a local bus. And that is the legacy of this horrific waste of $1.6 billion for a bus network that provides a worse service for Brisbane residents, more than 15% of Brisbane residents. My comments today, though, on item B, I just want to put on the record, again, another failure of this LNP administration. And this, of course, is related to the bus network and the metro. So Brisbane City Council essentially have decided, not during the two and a half, three years of consultation where they did nothing, but at, I think it was the twentieth of December last year I was notified, so we were on leave. I saw it coming over Christmas. We were notified that they would, council would be building a bus layover on King Arthur Terrace, right outside the Tennyson Reach Apartments and on the other side, outside of Parkland. Now, this is in a precinct where council's currently considering twenty-five-storey-high buildings, and there's going to be probably thousands of new residents, and they're taking away the on-street parking for Parkland shops, residents and visitors to Tennyson, at the tennis centre, by removing the parking and installing bus layovers outside these apartments and on a park. Now, the buses, of course, are impacting not only on the parking but also on the cycle lane that runs through there, because this is part of the River Loop. Now, four hundred residents who live at Tennyson Reach signed a petition calling on council to move it elsewhere in King Arthur Terrace. Now, I had already, prior to this petition being tabled in late January, contacted council to say, move it to one of the back streets in Yorongpili or move it to the industrial area off Tennyson Memorial Drive. So it is not impacting critical parking for necessary parts of Yorongpili that are subject to major future growth. Council wrote back and said, no, not doing that. Now, the residents have written, they're pretty angry. They're really angry, and I don't blame them, because this does not need to go in the location that it is. Councillor Murphy's botched metro project is causing all of these adverse impacts that are unnecessary. The buses that are going to junction on King Arthur Terrace have to go around via Tennyson Memorial Avenue, over a one-lane narrow rail bridge, around a tiny roundabout, then back up King Arthur Terrace. They could stop somewhere in the industrial part of Yorongpili that they drive past and junction there. Council could build a toilet there, not in the middle of a public park, which will only be available for the bus drivers, it won't be available for residents. But no, that's all too hard for council to consider this. Brisbane City Council have done the quickest, the most lazy and the most unhelpful thing they could possibly do.
Councillor Johnson, your time has expired. Are there further speakers? Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. I think both are separate, so I'll rise first to speak on item A. I want to start by acknowledging the positive steps around South Brisbane, the cultural station. There are positive steps that have been taken. I want to specifically highlight the Gray Street bikeway and the Melrose Street cycleway, which are definitely improvements. And obviously, there have been marked improvements for both stations. These are important starts to active transport and making it safer and more inviting. Of course, these bikeways do come to a southern stop, leaving people with no clear, safe route to continue their journey eastward, down Gray Street or towards the Karupa Peninsula, noting that there is a plan for Gray Street from the South Brisbane, South Bank Corporation. And they are looking for money for it, but they do stop. I do want to just touch base to create some reminders about these projects, because it's important to talk about what their initial vision was and the gaps that have existed. There's a matter of the urban common or the Pocket Park, which was supposed to be next to the South Brisbane Station. This was a part of the initial design, this is part of consultation. I know the councillor before me, councillor, former councillor Jonathan Shugnathan, had worked closely through you, Chair, councillor Murphy, on this. This disappeared from the plan. And instead, of course, that has been replaced by upgraded urban green at QPAC, before called the Green Jam space. And while that space is public, it is more performance-focused and it's next to a performing arts centre, and it's less about everyday people commuting and their needs and visitors to access Pocket Park green space that is flexible and usable in the precinct. There's also the matter of the public art and the Victoria Bridge shade sales, another example of some broken promises. And we know these promises were broken before, but these projects were initially tied to this metro project, to the cultural station project. And of course, they were cleared out in the 2023 budget, the infamous budget black hole. Two years later, of course, no updates, no progress if these are going to continue. And from, I guess, what we can only assume this budget black hole is moving deeper. I want to make it clear that shade sales aren't just about comfort, right? We have one of the highest cancer rates in Queensland. This is about creating a safe environment for people to use active transport and an active transport corridor, because it is now an active transport corridor. In this case, there have been pointed delays. And we know some of these delays, like I'll mention it, you know, I've been, I've been told about this apparent saga of the stolen tiles from Italy, which delayed the plaza at South Brisbane Station. And so there have been pointed delays. And while there are positives for the delivery, and I say that again, we need to remember this is not a complete delivery of the LNP vision. There are fragments in it, it is not complete. And those things that were decided to be cut are actually integral to some of the ways that this station can function. Congestion of South Brisbane busways potentially another symptom of this. Yes, there might be some relief with rerouting buses down the M3. And, you know, I support that. And I support its aim to improve bus flow to the, to the city. But again, we need infrastructure that works. We need to, I'll be keeping a close eye to make sure that the buses are moving through the cultural centre as efficiently as possible. That's my hope with these upgrades. In the end, while there have been commendable efforts, and, you know, I acknowledge that, it's important to note that this is not the complete vision. There were cuts. The cuts did happen. And there are fragments missing. And those fragments were not delivered, they were chosen to be not delivered by this LNP administration. In closing, I do wish through you, Chair, councillor Murphy, the best of luck. I did enjoy my time in the Transport Committee. It was unfortunately shorter than expected, but I do miss wish councillor Murphy the best of luck as Chair of the Infrastructure Committee in the future.
Thank you, councillor Massey. Are there any further speakers? No further speakers. Councillor Murphy, right reply. Councillor Murphy.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm still getting used to the five-minute speaking time here in this place, as you can tell, because sometimes I go on longer than I intend to and get cut off. So I thank councillors for speaking on this item to allow me time to use the rebuttal to just thank a few other people. In particular, I want to thank the wonderful staff at Transport for Brisbane and ably led by the acting divisional manager, Carl Hain. Carl took over after Samantha Abadira's departure as the acting divisional manager at a critical time for the metro project. And he's been outstanding in that role that he never sought out, but did receive nonetheless, and has been instrumental in getting the project to the point where we are now two weeks away from commissioning. So him and his divisional manager's office have been amazing, as have previous divisional managers that I've been able to work with there in Samantha and Carl Hain, sorry, Samantha and Jeff Beck as well, one of the longest-serving leaders of Transport for Brisbane. All three of these leaders have had their mark on the metro project, and they've done a tremendous job. And the proof will be, as I said in the pudding on the thirtieth of June. I also just want to reflect on, you know, some of the feedback from councillor Massey there. Have we been able to achieve everything we wanted to achieve with active transport? No. But if you had come to me five years ago and said, in, in a very short amount of time, you will have a four-and-a-half-kilometre link between West End and East Brisbane for cyclists and scooter users, I would have said, oh, did the, did the Greens win the election? Because that's the only way that's happening. The fact that we've been able to do this, we've been able to do it really well in a way that's brought the community with us, I think has been a remarkable achievement of this administration and something that, that I think people appreciate out there as they use the wonderful infrastructure that's already here in the River City, our beautiful river walks, our amazing bikeways. And there is certainly more to be done, and more will be done under the leadership of Lord Mayor Adrian Srinarth and soon-to-be Chair of Transport, councillor Wines. I also want to thank, you know, my deputy councillor Parry, who's coming with me to the Infrastructure Committee. She's been amazing, as have committee members on both sides. I hope the Infrastructure Committee is as, you know, enjoyable as the Transport Committee has, will be in a different way, says councillor Wines. Well, you know, we'll see about that. Mostly, I, you know, I want to thank all my fantastic personal staff, too many over the years in this portfolio to name, but they've been tremendous and they've all left their mark on, on the city of Brisbane. Thank you so much for, for supporting me and very much looking forward to delivering for the Lord Mayor in this new role as Infrastructure Chair. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
We'll now put item A to the vote. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. We'll now put item B to the vote. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Chongwa. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seventeen in favour and seven against.
Motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillor Wines, Infrastructure Committee.
Madam Chair, I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the tenth of June, twenty twenty-five, be adopted.
Seconded. Point of order. Has been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Parry that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, tenth of June, twenty twenty-five, be adopted. Councillor Chongwa.
Sorry, Chair. I call B, C and D in seri item for voting purposes.
So you want B, C and D together and A on its own, or you want B, C and D separately? Your micro, sorry. A on its own and B, C and D for voting or debate?
Sorry, I'd like, for voting purposes, I'd like to be able to vote on B, C and D.
Okay.
Yep, thank you. Sorry about that.
Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Can I just rise to speak to the report before us, the Infrastructure Committee report? And can I also recognise councillor Parry, who's already practising what it is to second the reports here for the Infrastructure Committee? Look, it's, last week we saw a fantastic presentation about the scope and works of things that are delivered by our City Projects Office, delivered by Dean Morse. And it was an interesting presentation because it spoke again to the breadth and depth of, of what this organisation does. But really, the objective of the presentation was not only to display that, but also to display what happens when state and federal governments partner with the Brisbane City Council and the sorts of things they can deliver. So for example, and, you know, there's been a lot of discussion over the last few weeks about what is the federal government's responsibility to the level of things that they would be prepared to fund locally. So for example, there are some larger ones, like the intersection of Wadeville Street and Richie Road in the Carling Vale Ward, that was funded through an LRCI project, a local roads and community infrastructure project for, there was the Kelvin Grove lighting project. This was deemed worthy of federal intervention. Lighting of Ipswich Road. Lighting of Ipswich Road, the Ipswich Road Tunnel Lighting System. Sometimes they might be quite interesting, but also a moment here to consider the Canary Creek Channel and Culverts, if I can draw the council's attention to these drains, they were a project necessary for the Nudgee Creek area, but also co-funded by the federal government. There was, of course, the Tuie Forest Escarpment and Footpath, that was deemed worthy of federal government intervention. The Archerfield Wetlands Shared Pathway, this was also of national significance. The Shaun Cliff Escarpment, national. The Sandgate Hawks Car Park, a federally funded grant for that project. The Acacia Ridge Leisure Centre Pump was funded by our federal government. Yeah, the, the pump, well, you need to pump the water to clean it out. And of course, the Yoranga Park Pool Inverter, which is of course this system here. All of these were, of course, well within the remit of the federal government and well within the things that they care about at local level. And I suppose the point I'm making is that the Prime Minister from, in recent comments has said that partnering with this organisation on the Story Bridge is below him, but it's good to know that the Yoranga Park Pool Inverter is not below him. So I suppose the point is, of course, that the federal government routinely partners with the Brisbane City Council on a whole range of things. Not funded through LRCI, but in your own constituency, the Beams Road project is a partnered, is a partnered project. So I just wanted, as a final thought, on, in my time here in Infrastructure Chair, I wanted to say that the federal government does in fact partner with us to do a whole range of things, big and small, and to say that the Story Bridge is not worthy, I don't, is, is a position I clearly don't agree with the Prime Minister for holding at this time. There were three petitions considered by our committee, two of them were under the consideration of the speed limit on Ashgrove Avenue, I trust that councillor Toomey will make further comment on those, one pro, one anti. And of course, the third one is that council published on its website, the, the information collected by SAM data, it is voluminous in its, in its, you know, there's a great deal of volume of information, I was trying my best to use that word correctly. And the truth is, is that to maintain it to a standard would take a lot of effort, but here's the thing, if any of my constituents ask, what did the SAM site see, I provide them that information. All councillors have provided the information in the SAMs. So our recommendation is, if a local resident has a concern or would like to know what the SAM site saw, simply ask your local councillor, and if they're of a mind to, they would provide it, as I and I trust most of my committee members and most councillors do. So there's quite a bit covered there, and I look forward to further contributions.
Further speakers? No, councillor Toomey?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I rise to speak on item B and C, the two petitions around Ashgrove Avenue, one requesting a speed reduction, the other one saying, no, we don't want one. Madam Chairman, as I said in, in committee, essentially this is a basic neighbourhood dispute over what the speed of the road should be. One petitioner went out and started door knocking, and the other petitioner got wind of it and decided to put in a counter petition. Madam Chairman, at the, at the root of the petition is Ashgrove Avenue. Now, Ashgrove Avenue used to be an old track, it was originally dirt, it was carved out way before the turn of the century. Three Mile Scrub, yes, I'll take that in injection from councillor Wines, it used to be known as Three Mile Scrub Road. It was a dirt road up until, oh, definitely into the 50s, 60s, 70s, somewhere around there. Yeah, yeah, I think Payne Road came in 74. It is not a windy road by any stretch of the imagination. It is a fairly straight road with a few bends in it, Madam Chairman. The road itself actually functions quite well, it connects major corridors such as Inogah Road all the way through to Waterworks Road. It's an economic connector between those two roads. At one end of Ashgrove Avenue, we have the New Market Shopping Centre, featured New Market Pub, which has recently been renovated, big plug for them, if anybody is out there looking for a good pub tomorrow night, I recommend the New Market Pub. And then it goes all the way through to Ashgrove Central, which is another economic hub where we see most of our, most of our shopping centre district around Ashgrove, which is Woolies, Coles, we have Aldi there, we have the very famous Billy's Meats there as well. So this road is essentially a, a fairly straight road with a few bends in it. It does have bike awareness zones on it, and it is used quite regularly by cyclists, including myself. It is a hilly in certain aspects, speeding along there has been noted by the police, and the police do regularly put up mobile speed cameras there. Those mobile speed cameras also look at phone and also seatbelt cameras. Madam Chairman, from what I can tell, the, the resident who was pursuing this to have a speed reduction was doing it basically for the cyclists. There's plenty of room on Waterworks Road as a cyclist, there's plenty of room on Ashgrove Avenue for cyclists. The speed is being addressed by the Queensland Police, and it is a major connector, and as such has a volume of traffic I wouldn't call significant, but it does have a volume of traffic that does run in between those two corridors. Madam Chairman, it's, one thing I will do is I will support the recommendations on both of these petitions under item B and item C. Personally, I do not believe that Ashgrove Avenue does warrant a speed reduction. I think it's well monitored by the police, it's well used by the cyclists in part. As, as far as I know, I've never known there to be any interaction between vehicle and cyclist along that road, given that it is a significantly or relatively straight corridor. Madam Chairman, I am entrusting that the chamber will support the officer's recommendation on both of the petitions under item B and C. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Strunk.
Oh, listen, Madam Chair, I couldn't resist, I had to get up. I had to. Yeah, anyways, it's in regards to the three petitions, the two for Ashgrove Avenue and the other one for the SAM signs data. So what we got is a straight road that's got curves and hills. And bends, bends, curves.
Councillor Toomey, do not call out or another councillor on the table. And thank you councillor Toomey.
Thank you for your protection, Chair. So, yes, we, we agree with the, the recommendations on the, the two for Ashgrove Avenue, but I just thought it was, I was just sitting there and I was listening to the description and, and it was the hills that got me, got me up to speak on that. Anyways, on the item D, the data release for SAM signs, yes, it's true that councillors do receive this data and we can distribute it, but I think in general, I think the, the interaction between ward offices and constituents is, is, is quite extensive anyways, I mean, it's quite, we're quite busy basically, and I think, I think most offices are as well. And, and, and if, if they, if they want some of the data, then I think they should just be able to go to the website and, and have a look, right? We've got this beautiful new website, let's populate it with the, with the information, and then we can just basically say, listen, you know, just pop onto the website, go to this pull-down tab, and there, there it is. And so there's few people that probably want to have a look at the data, because it's probably a road that they, they live in, right? And they want to see how the SAM sign is progressing, whether it's to drop the speed or whether the hoons are sort of challenging it to get the funny face rather than the smiley face, that happens too, of course. But generally speaking, the SAM signs are working well, it was a great initiative all those years ago, and, and I think people, people like them and they, and I think it's just a good reminder to watch your speed in that particular road. It may be 50, it may be 60, it may be 40, it's most likely going to be 60 or 50, and more likely to be 60. But it's, it's important that, that we try to keep the speed down in any case, within our suburban road network and, and, and some of the hierarchy roads as well. But we, we won't be supporting item D because we feel that we just should distribute the information out. However, right, they shouldn't actually have to come to a councillor's office or ring a councillor to ask for it, it should just be freely available to anyone who wants to look it up themselves. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers, councillor, point of order councillor Chongwa.
Madam Chairman, I'm just seeking clarification on the voting, so I'm just hoping that it's, I want to seek for B, C and D to be individually voted on.
No, that wasn't what you asked for, but you can ask for it, so.
Point of order.
Councillor Strunk.
Yeah, I'm just a little bit confused, so are all items now being voted individually?
Nobody has actually moved that that happened. Councillor Wines.
Point of order, Madam Chair, I, I propose that we consider all four items individually by serial item place.
That's what we needed, thank you very much. Any further speakers? Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair, can I thank all contributors, and I note that the ongoing interest of my committee members councillor Toomey and councillor Strunk in the operation of this section of council, and thank them for their contributions both today and historically. Can I also thank councillors Marks, Huang and Johnston for their keen interest and commitment to our committee as well. All of the people who supported the operations of that committee through the CAG and the CCLO, thank you to them. Can I thank my own team in the, up on Level Six? Can I also recognise the, the many managers who have supported me over the years, whether they be people like Scott Stewart and Tanya Orr, Alan Evans, Dean Morse and their team, Graham, Luke, Tom and Michelle, Joe and Cherie, Bridget, Courtney, Florindia, Paul, the problem with naming people, Mel, Mel, Tracy. No, look, the truth is, and I, I make that, I say that because there are so many people who have helped us over the years deliver what is a consistent way of engaging with the people of Brisbane and improving their road network, improving the operations of that road network, engaging in the asset steering and asset management systems, the transport planning operations, whether that be planning for the future through the North West Transport Planning Studies, whether it be through delivering major items like Beams Road, like the Mogga Road, Interpili Roundabout Removal Project, whether it be maintenance work on structures like our work on Walter Taylor Bridge, or even, I suppose, the, the operational work about how parking metres work, how parking, how on-street parking works. The full breadth and scale and diversity of the Infrastructure Committee is something that delivers across all ranges of the city and all experiences of residents there. So can I just take a moment to thank all people who worked for that section and will continue to work for them, quite obviously, under the stewardship of councillor Murphy, but there have been some wonderful managers that I've worked with over that time, and I thank them all for their support, for their efforts and for their commitment to making this an even better city.
We'll now put item A to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. We'll now put item B to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. We'll now put item C to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. We'll now put item D to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Strunk and seconded by councillor Massey. Eyes to my right, nose to my left, clerks, please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seventeen in favour and five against.
That is carried. Councillors, please return to your seats. Councillor Allen, City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 10th of June 2025 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Wolf that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 10th of June 2025 be adopted.
Point of order, I'd like to call Sarah.
Point of order councillor Chongwa.
Thank you, I'd like to call Sarah for B and C for debate and voting purposes.
Serial item for B and C for, for, just for voting or for debate, so we'll go with...
Separately, yeah.
Everything separately then. So we'll go A, B and C for debate separately and for voting. Councillor Allen, item A.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item A was a, A was a committee presentation on a development site located at 34 Kennington Road Camp Hill. The subject site is a corner lot and is zoned for low-medium density residential housing and included a material change of use for multiple dwellings and reconfiguring one lot into four. The total site area is 789 square metres, it is currently occupied by a single dwelling which will be demolished to facilitate the site's development. The subject site is within walking distance of Old Cleveland Road, which has bus stops serviced by frequent services to the CBD and Westfield Carrondale. Madam Chair, as mentioned before, the site will project four dwellings made up of three-bedroom two-storey townhouse-style dwellings with lot sizes varying from 165 square metres to 229 square metres. The building design includes an articulated facade including curved forms and variation in materials. The design also includes shading devices on all windows, orientation to both street frontages and addresses the principles of crime prevention through environmental design, or as more often known, SEPTAD. The site provides for 97 square metres of deep planting, which equates to 12.2% of the site coverage, and landscaping will be provided for each private open space as well as the corner frontage. Being a corner block, the site will have shared driveways provided on both street frontages with the development providing eight resident and four visitor car parks as well as four residential bike spaces. Madam Chair, this is a great outcome for the area, providing additional housing supply in a well-serviced area and contributing to great diversity in housing choice for this particular market.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Chongwa.
Yes, I'd like to speak on petition C.
No, so we're doing the discussion on A first, we'll vote on that when the serial item for, for debate and voting. So anybody else on item A? So we'll now put that to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Gibney. Eyes to my right, nose to my left, clerks, please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being twenty-two in favour.
Motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item B was a petition objecting to the development approval of 30 to 36 Hertford Street, Upper Mount Gravat. The petition contained 53 signatures, all of whom live in McGregor Ward. The site has a total area of 8,831 square metres and is located within the Mount Gravat Corridor Neighbourhood Plan. The site was currently, contains three lots, including detached houses, a pool and a tennis court. The development application proposes five buildings, each at five stories, for a total of 80 units. Now, it's worth bearing in mind that the development application was lodged on the 30th of June, 2022, and approved on the 30th of March, 2023, after being assessed by council against the requirements of the city plan and in accordance with the provisions of the Planning Act. So this is an approved development. There are 160 car parks available for residents and tenants as well as 21 visitor spaces on the site. Conditions of the approval included the requirement of privacy screening to be installed on relevant windows and balconies to further enhance privacy. The parking structure is also required to be acoustically screened from adjoining dwellings with a minimum of 1.8 metre-high acoustic barriers, which is designed to ensure that vehicle headlights are screened from adjacent side boundaries. Now, notwithstanding the application is approved, construction has not yet commenced for this application. However, the timeframe is currently until the 29th of June, 2029. The local councillor, councillor Huang, was consulted on the petition and supported the response. I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? No further speakers. We'll now put item B to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Chongwa and seconded by councillor Massey. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being twenty-one in favour and two abstentions.
That is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item C was a petition requesting council ensure a riverwalk bikeway is provided along Howard Smith Walls, Brisbane City and its development application, A00661889. The petition contained 617 signatures, 133 who lived in Central Ward, 444 living in other wards within the Brisbane LGA and 40 live outside of the Brisbane LGA. The petitioners requested the delivery of a world-class riverwalk bikeway segregated from pedestrians as part of the proposed redevelopment. They also wanted the riverwalk to be compliant with TMR and Ostroads guidelines. The site has a total area of 44,000-odd square metres and is located within the Open Space Zone and City Centre Neighbourhood Plan area. The area is mapped as containing a riverwalk and primary cycle route as part of the city plan. The site plays an important role as part of an integrated movement corridor with access to and through the site from New Farm Riverwalk with the city centre. In September 2024, council received a redevelopment proposal of Howard Smith Walls, which included a new 77-room hotel as well as additional dining and entertainment offerings. The development application is currently being assessed by council against the requirements of the city plan and in accordance with the provisions of the Planning Act. Council issued an information request to the applicant in December 2024, which raised a number of queries, including the proposed shared pedestrian and bicycle path through the site. A response to this request was received on the 9th of May and is currently being reviewed by the officers. The applicant also responded to the State Assessment and Referral Agency's request for information, which raised matters of active transport through the site. Although the application is code assessable, assessment officers will take into account the feedback from the petition, similar to how it would do with every other submission received regarding this development application. As the development application is currently being assessed, it would be inappropriate to comment on what the outcome for the site might be at this stage and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. On this petition, I have a few concerns about the process and, and the response from council to the petitioners and a lot of what councillor Allen has said in the summary, except all of that, and appreciate that fulsome summary, it itself raises some concerns around the timing of the response and the decision that is being made today. The petition could, in this particular circumstance, perhaps wait a little bit. Now, we've been critical about petitions taking too long. It just seems like this one strangely was rushed through quite quickly and a decision is being made ahead of the development application being fully considered and decided on. Therefore, it gives an out for the, for the petition to be properly considered in what it's actually calling for. And so I have a bit of a concern around that. That could have potentially waited until the next session, until we have had the process of the information request being fully assessed by council officers and us knowing what is actually going to be proposed in its final iteration for cycling and pedestrian movement through the site. So councillor Allen has highlighted that this is a primary cycle route and it is identified within the neighbourhood plan as being, as having a riverwalk in this section. Now, it, it exists, the riverwalk exists, it just so happens that you have to walk through a restaurant to access it at the moment and a shared path does exist at the back of the site. And so I know there are changes proposed by the proponent and council is considering them and it is a distinctive improvement on what's there currently. But, but the other problem I have with this petition response and councillor Allen came close to touching on it just then is the issue around its compliance or the bikeways compliance with TMR guidelines and Ostroads standards. And I asked lots of questions at the committee presentation last week about, of the council officers, whether council's position in assessing this development application is that as a minimum, do TMR guidelines and Ostroads standing, Ostroads standards apply as, as council's minimum standard essentially? And that wasn't clear. That, that, you know, the answers we continued to get, question after question, was that it is under assessment and, and council will just assess what is proposed. But at no point will council say we have a bare minimum in terms of what is provided in a place that is marked as a primary cycle route and has been identified as requiring a riverwalk through there. So I am a bit concerned about that and given it's, it's a significant part of the riverwalk and a primary cycle route in and out of the city, right under the Story Bridge, which is currently closed and, and potentially falling into the site, with concrete potentially sheeting off and falling into the site, i- is a significant connector for all of Brisbane, but particularly in Central Ward and councillor Howard's Ward. It's an important asset there and a lot of people are feeling the effects of the LMP's neglect on the Story Bridge. They are also raising concerns, councillor Howard's residents, about access through this site as well. So I'm sure councillor Howard's going to speak, she's going to get up and speak on this petition and fill us in about what is the, the local advocacy piece on this, I guess, from the local councillor is. But there are just a few too many concerns for us to be able to vote on this today in, in my view and the, while the LMP will use their numbers to, to table and delay responses to issues that we raise, they obviously won't support that for things they want to clear the decks of. So, you know, there's probably, there's no point in trying to have that delayed, but I think there's concerns on behalf of people that want to use that area to walk through or to cycle through should be raised and I accept those concerns that people have raised with me directly and more broadly through this petition as well, some 600 people. And given council itself has identified this is a primary cycle route, needs to be a riverwalk. The compromise was reached in the original development application, meaning the riverwalk was open but people traversed a restaurant, that there is an opportunity for council to have a strong position in what should be delivered here and I just fear that this petition response doesn't meet that.
Further speakers? Councillor Chongwa.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on clause C petition, requesting council ensure a riverwalk bikeway is provided along Howard Smith Walls, Brisbane City. The petitioners are calling for Howard Smith Walls to upgrade the existing shared used path to segregated path as part of the current development application to the changes the site. This would ensure safe passage for active transport commuters. The concern from the bike user groups is one of the arguments that Howard Smith Walls is using to justify not upgrading the path from shared to segregated is a claim that they will be provided a shared path of a minimum of six metres of unobstructed width. But this misses the point. According to developers, are in very low count, around 100 cyclists and 500 pedestrians use this footpath. Based on Ostroads Guides to Road Design Part 6A, they need separated paths. Commuting cyclists should not need to weave around pedestrians and pedestrians shouldn't have to worry about dodging bikes. With six metres of space, it's so easy to just build a barrier between the two groups. Basically, the Howard Smith Walls administration is not respecting the road that is supposed to function as a primarily an active transport corridor linking the inner north to the CBD. Our green's policy is that any destination that is accessible via motor vehicle should be accessible for pedestrians via safe, direct route. So I support the petitioners' view on demanding for a segregated path for pedestrians, cyclists and scooter riders. Clearly, the original design of Howard Smith Walls has not considered active transport safety as there are many where, times where people who are attending functions are forced to line up on the road, which also creates hazards. The LMP administration likes to boast clean, green, sustainable. This is clearly, clearly a greenwash that is not moving towards a truly authentic, sustainable model, where we should be promoting and supporting segregated bike and pedestrian infrastructure to improve safety for active transport commuters and therefore taking care of the road, reducing climate pollution and traffic congestion.
Further speakers? Councillor Massey.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak briefly on this petition and I thank my colleagues, councillor Chongwa and I also thank councillor Cassidy for their comments. I think what's important to note here is this is the only viable link for a peninsula to get to the city, noting that Brunswick Street is too dangerous, noting that Citylink Stage Three is still missing. And of course, Citylink Stage Three will create a complete difference as we connect the wonderful Waronga Bridge, the green bridge down at Breakfast Creek. Sorry, thanks for the interjection.
Wagara.
Wagara, thank you. Thank you, councillor Hutton. Which is a wonderful connection that we know people are using. I think what's important to note also for this area is how important the riverwalk is, not just for commuting, but also for lifestyle and exercise and active transport usage. And we know that initially when Howard Smith Walls first was developed, there was a bunch of consultation recommendations that were made by various groups. One of them, of course, was like to have properly separated paths. And instead, of course, what we saw were winding roads that were really dangerous for not only pedestrians but for cyclists, for visitors, for scooter users, noting that there is a huge increase of scooter users. So I think what this petition is actually calling for is a certainty and guarantee from this LMP council that it takes active transport on responsibly to keep the residents of this area, which is densifying also, safe. We know the Fortitude Valley is densifying. We know that it is a place that is increasing and will rapidly increase density, to keep everyone safe, because everyone's a pedestrian, every single person, whether you're, you know, whether you ride to work, whether you drive to work, whether you walk to work, school, et cetera, catch public transport, at some point you are walking. And so that's the important thing. This petition response, which does seem very rushed before there's actual official notification, doesn't give us any guarantees, doesn't talk specifically about what best standard practice could be in place for what is and should be one of the most amazing livable cities, parts of the city on that side. The riverwalk is important. It is designated a riverwalk. At six metres, you can have proper separation and that will keep everyone safe, noting it's not just about the residents but people visiting for leisure and exercise. The separated bikeway gives direction. The separate bikeway means that people don't wander around not knowing which way to go and that's going to keep people safer. And so, you know, we'll be voting this petition down because I just, I think council can actually deliver. Earlier today through you, Chair, councillor Murphy talked about bikeways and what's been delivered in the five years. And I think, you know, this council can deliver on this as a part of Howard Smith Walls' new development application, where they got it so wrong, and I think we all know, I'm sure people have talked about this in this chamber, where they got it so wrong the first time. So we'll be voting this petition down because we want to support the residents of this area in Central Ward who have reached out not only to me, it seems, but to a lot of opposition councillors. And we're not just talking about cyclists here, we're talking about residents who want this riverwalk, who have reached out to all of us that are wanting this separation and wanting that pedestrian safety in their backyard. Thanks.
Further speakers? No further speakers. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I thank everybody for their contribution to the debate. I did want to just raise a couple of points. Firstly, as I mentioned previously, the petition will be treated as a submission and will be reviewed by the appropriate delegate. There's still an opportunity if residents have any further information they'd like to feed into the Development Services team, they can through the submission process. In terms of the response time, you know, we seek to provide responses on petitions as quickly as we reasonably can. In this particular instance, we have no certainty as to when this particular application will be decided, so we took a view that we would provide the, the response to, to the petitioners and that's what we've done in this case. Thank you, Madam Chair.
We'll now put item C to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Chongwa and seconded by councillor Massey. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seventeen in favour and five against.
The motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats.
Point of order Chair.
Point of order councillor Massey.
Thank you Chair. I'm just checking how much time left we have in the meeting.
We have about 25 minutes. Councillor Davis.
Thank you Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I move that the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting of Tuesday 10 June 2025 be adopted.
Seconded.
Moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Marks that the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday 10th of June 2025 be adopted. Councillor Davis.
Point of order Chair.
Point of order councillor.
Can I move that item B and C be voted together in summary item?
So we're going to debate item, just for voting, okay, so item A and B and C together. Councillor Davis.
Thank you Madam Chair. Before I get into the committee report, as you heard earlier, I had the great pleasure of representing the Lord Mayor at the 2025 Queensland Landscape Architecture Awards last Thursday evening. And it was a great evening, and what I can report is that landscape architects like to have a really good time. They're enjoying it. They're having a wonderful time and clearly they look forward to coming together at this annual event. It was great to see. Would also like to mention that Brisbane City Council and its subsidiaries did very well and were well represented amongst the nominees. And of the 27 awards that were given, we were in receipt of five of them, and councillor Murphy has spoken about the green bridges that we were successful in taking award for. But we also had three other landscape awards, and that was for the Archfield Wetlands project, a number of the different areas of that great project that's being delivered for council through Brisbane Sustainability Agency. So that project received an award for excellence for land management and Archfield Wetlands District Park. It came away with the Award of Excellence for Parks and Open Spaces and along with a Landscape Architecture Award for Play Spaces. So it was a great evening, it was great to be there. As I said, we had a number of projects that were nominated, they were of extremely high calibre, and can I congratulate all of the council officers that were so invested in these projects and continue to be invested in these projects, and along with our project partners who helped either in the design or delivery of it. Madam Chair, the committee presentation was on platypus in Brisbane. You may recall, Madam Chair, last year I reported that we had a presentation that was the start of a project for which we were doing with platypus, and it was wonderful to have Elizabeth Sisson come back and present to us and provide an update on what's been achieved since then. As you were Madam Chair, Brisbane has a number of platypus populations that we've committed to protecting under the Platy Boost project by 2032. And under the initiative, we aim to understand the local populations of platypus, we want to conduct research and have platy partnerships, because we like to work with researchers and other organisations. We base all of the research on science. You would know that we had been undertaking some work around eDNA samples in our creeks and waterways to understand where platypus may be living. And so the work that's being done has identified more specifically some areas, and it was great to hear more about the work that was done at Bullock Head Creek. There was a survey done, I know councillor Hutton was very excited to join the research team in terms of that survey, and we managed to capture two platypus. One was an adult male platypus that had travelled about 18 kilometres through the catchment, and also a juvenile, also a juvenile male. The females must be much more elusive than the males. And, you know, councillor Massey and I don't agree on everything, but what we do agree on is that we think platypus are an amazing creature and that this project is well worth the investment and the effort. We also heard about some of the interesting platy facts, and I think I might have raised some of them last time I spoke, but just to remind the chamber on some of these excellent platy facts, male platypuses have venomous ankle spurs for territorial defence. Platypus hunt using electroreception with their tiny sensory pores on their bills that detect muscle pulses of their prey. Their waterproof fur boasts 600 to 900 hairs per square millimetre, which is absolutely incredible, which equates to wearing a three-millimetre neoprene wetsuit. Their nesting burrows can be up to 30 metres in length. Female platypuses don't have nipples like other mammals. Instead, they feed their young by exuding milk from mammary glands on their abdomen. And a recently discovered fact is that the thickness of the tail of the platypus indicates the health of the little critter, so the thicker the better. So Madam Chair, it's a fantastic initiative, we're working very well with the researchers.
Sorry councillor Davis, your time has expired. Further speakers, councillor Massey.
Thanks Chair. I'll speak on all items. I'll start briefly with item A, also thanking Elizabeth and thanking through you Chair, councillor Davis for the presentation. I am very excited about platypus, platypai. I think they're an iconic Australian animal, and it was incredibly exciting to hear the research update, especially so soon after like the previous presentation only happening in the past six months. I'll just go even further to talk about what I thought was the most exciting thing about it, which was further to, through you Chair, what councillor Davis talked about about the adult male who travelled 18 kilometres. There is a working theory that the platypus are using the Brisbane River as a highway to creeks. And of course, that data is indicating that they are, which is very exciting science, it's very exciting data. So I just want to share that, very much enjoyed the presentation. And as councillor Davis said through you Chair, we might not agree on everything, but on this, we absolutely do. I'm going to talk now on petition B and C. Petition B being the request that council cease work on the reconstruction of the playground in Fenwick Park in Mitchelton, and instead consult with local community about its relocation. And petition C, which calls on council to support and improve mountain bike trails in Eldon Hill Reserve Windsor, noting, and I think we should be transparent about it, these current mountain bike trails are illegal and not officially put there in council. I also do want to mention a third petition, which is directly related to item C, which is requesting that council preserve the natural values of Eldon Hill Reservoir and protect it from unauthorised and environmentally damaging mountain bike trails. You can read more of the issue and what that talks about, noting that it talks about community consultation, that third petition, and that information is on the Windsor News website from memory. Look, at the heart of all these petitions, the two that are here in front of us today and the third one, is something very clear. Residents across Inglewood are crying out for genuine consultation. They want to be heard, they want to be seen, and they want to be included in decisions that directly affects the places they live, walk, play and connect in. They are the experts in their communities and they want to be included on that journey, not just handed finished products or treated as an afterthought. In Inglewood, locals are seeking for a say in the future of their playground. I think they wanted to co-design, obviously it's too late now because I hear that it's nearly done, but maybe the petition shouldn't have happened if there was consultation that happened first. In Windsor, in Inglewood, the petitions, and I'm quoting the two, the other one and the one that's here, reflect a diverse community view. Some residents are advocating for better infrastructure to support responsible mountain bike use, while others are rightfully concerned about erosion, habitat loss and the growing impact of unregulated trails. These are not opposing goals, and that's exactly why council and the local council needs to step in and lead with a real conversation. Environment protection and active recreation are both possible. We're seeing this, well, we're partially seeing this in Malkutha, but it's only possible when council listens and works with the people on the ground. All three speak to something bigger. They speak to a Brisbane City Council under the LMP administration that's struggling to deliver open, transparent and inclusive decision-making. People want to shape their neighbourhoods, not to be spectators to the decisions that are made. And because these residents deserve, through you Chair, a councillor that consults well before these petitions come in, they pay the rates and they pay the rents after all. And in support of what is green's policy, which is general consultation and real community engagement, we will not be voting for these two petitions.
Further speakers, councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thanks Madam Chair. I rise to speak on this report as well. I also would like to congratulate council officers, particularly the sustainability organisation of council, the great work they've done in relation to Archfield Wetlands and Archfield Wetlands Trail, which are very popular in my ward. In relation to the report here regarding platypus, yes, very good report. Unfortunately, I couldn't make it to that committee, but it's been an interesting read. And certainly one of the reasons that I'm meeting with residents and meeting with visitors to the city who are saying it's one of the reasons they want to come to Brisbane, is they want to see our wildlife, they want to experience our flora and fauna, and they want to see it for real. And certainly, one of the spots, the hotspots that has been identified for platypus is Bridgeman Downs. And you remember me speaking last week about residents from Bridgeman Downs who wanted to protect bushland over there. I had a meeting with those residents, and you have councillor Cassidy, I know councillor Davis has too, about protecting a particular corridor along the creek there, and that creek contains a lot of platypus. And I know council's been doing a lot of work in terms of the DNA data, which supports that there are platypus in that particular area. So we called for and wanted a bushland buyback for that particular corridor, and we believe it makes sense to buy that back. And one of the reasons we believe that makes sense to buy that land back and preserve it is because of our magnificent wildlife that we have such as platypus. So unfortunately, this year will be the first year in 35 years that this administration, this LMP administration, has not bought one piece of bushland. Let me just repeat that. This is the first time in 35 years this LMP administration has not bought any bushland, despite us making $20 million out of the bushland.
Councillor Griffiths, we're not talking about that. Can you come back to what was actually in the committee presentation, please? I'm asking you to come back to the committee presentation.
Yep, and I'm happy to come back to it. And I'm talking about platypus, and I'm talking about the great population of platypus that we have at, out of Bridgeman Downs and along that corridor. And it's not just along that corridor, it's actually koalas, we've got along that corridor as well. And there are some councils who actually believe that that koala and platypus corridors should be protected. They're on this side of the chamber, they're not on that side of the chamber, but we strongly believe in that. And part of, also another part of the environment report and part of preserving our flora and fauna in the city is keeping the weed programme going and spending the $20 million we have in offset funding on restoring bushland, restoring our trees across the city. So this is a very important report. Platypus are very important. In fact, they're the, my understanding is they're the oldest mammal in the world, oldest mammal in the world. So yeah, we should be patting ourselves on the back for the great work we're doing, but it's no good doing this great work if we aren't preserving the bushland and we aren't preserving our creeks and restoring them so that these animals survive.
Further speakers, councillor Wines.
Thanks Madam Chair. I just rise to speak to the two petitions before us, and just to consider the content of them and make general comment about the requests and the issues at hand in those. I'll start firstly with Alden Hill. So Alden Hill sits on the border of Windsor and Wilston. It is at its heart a water reserve. So when we talk about the natural beauty of that particular location, I think it's important to remember, when we talk about what can be done there, we have to remember this really important thing. Alden Hill was a hill, then in the 30s, we, when I say we, I mean probably the council, ripped it out and put a massive water reserve there, a massive water reservoir there, and then built the hill back in around it. Now, it provides wonderful opportunities for recreation as a result of that. It has a wonderful lookout that we, the Shrinra administration built, so that you can look at the city. It's a great aspect for a whole range of things. We also upgraded the walking paths around it. It is a wonderful recreation place in that position, on the border of, as I say, the border of Windsor and Wilston. The problem with allowing mountain biking there is, if you go back to that first issue I said, it is now an artificial mountain, made out, artificial hill I should say, that's largely fill and shale in a lot of key places. Now, if you were to allow mountain biking through there, the erosion in a very short amount of time would be marked. And the problem is that it would fall away quickly, we can't guarantee that we can maintain the safety of cyclists through that area, and that the degradation for both the purpose of it as a reservoir and the natural, and then that other purpose of enjoyment, can't be protected and guaranteed if we allow mountain biking in that place. So I appreciate some people in the community would like to be able to do that, but there are other issues at hand that are material, that prevent us from permitting that action in that place. Now, not saying that mountain biking is not, I'm not making any comment about mountain biking or mountain bikers, all I'm saying is that if we were to permit it on a scale in that location, it would be meaningfully detrimental to that site and remove a lot of the features that people like about it. I understand why people like it, and it is a great place. We've done a lot of work there. You, you are actually in there doing some work now to ensure that the inner north community gets a reliable, clean source of water. The other item worth discussing is Fenwick Park, the other petition. We have actually, I appreciate the concerns of residents, we have been in actually routine correspondence with a range of residents about the future of that location. It has been difficult to address some of the wishes of those residents for a number of reasons, not least of which is the fact that we have only just taken possession of the site, approximate again after a 12-month road construction by DTMR on Sanford Road, which is the northern boundary of Fenwick Park. Now that we have that, there are opportunities to address the concerns of residents and to build a play node and a recreation space even better than what we have at the moment and what we had before. So I know that there were some requests to move it from certain locations, they have been acknowledged, however, and I'm not saying anything that people don't already understand, shade cloth is really, really expensive to put in place. And this was, the shade cloth supporting structures are in place and are ready for the shade cloth to be put back in, and a number of the swings and things were already there, and we could save the rate paid, tens of thousands of dollars, if not more, from keeping the park in the location that it is. So it's not that the recommendations or the requests of local residents haven't been heeded, but rather there were other issues considered to ensure that the delivery of this playground at the location is to a standard and in a variety that is consistent with the expectations of local residents. It is a playground that I arranged to be upgraded to a much higher standard, and I have maintained my position that that playground will maintain its high level of interaction and interest and materials within that playground to make it a big draw for the Mitchelton community. So pleased to those people who did take the time to sign that petition, we did consider everything that you asked of us, however, there were other matters that had to be taken into consideration in the delivery of this particular outcome, and I'm looking forward very much to the conclusion of that in the very near future.
Further speakers, councillor Hutton.
Thank you Chair. I rise to speak about the fantastic presentation on platypus. Now whilst I wasn't able to be part of the presentation, I have certainly been the recipient of the great work that our news branch has been doing in this space. Now, last year I was heavily involved in the eDNA project in my Now, last year, I was heavily involved in the EDNA project in my local area. So we did the EDNA project, which is literally taking water samples within the creek to understand if there is platypus DNA within the creek corridor. We were fortunate to be able to confirm that there was DNA in the creek, so they are in Bullockhead Creek, Wilston Creek and Gindalee Creek. Now, further on from that project, with the support of our news branch, we were able to get some further grant funding to do another piece of work, which was actually to undertake a trapping programme. So Dr Timiel Brunt, who is our lead researcher here in Queensland, was taking charge and she rang me. It was actually on about six weeks ago, she rang me and said, hey, we're going out to do some trapping in Wilston Creek at Dara, and would you like to come? I had some very low expectations, Madam Chair. It's not that I didn't think that we wouldn't catch anything, but obviously, they're very elusive creatures, and I'm sure in Councillor Davis's presentation, she was able to explain how these little critters managed to escape many things. And we went out to Pooh Corner, I had my head torch on, we were stomping through the bush, and we went to our first trap. They lifted the first trap, and we had managed to secure two eels, which were interesting creatures, but not really what we were after. Good eating! We then went to the second trap, which was further, further into the corridor. As we were in there, the trains going past, this is a very, very urban area. So in this location, we have got heavy industrial on one side, we've got a train line, and we've obviously got housing on the other. We went to the second trap, and Timiel was in there, in her waders, and lifted up and said, oh my gosh, we have got one. And so, Madam Chair, I'm happy to table it, but this is the gorgeous little critter that we managed to find in Dara, in the heart of our community. And I just want to say, it was truly a magnificent find. As, sorry, Billy, I'll pass it to you.
Healthy he is.
A very healthy little male. He is a young adolescent male who has literally just left his nest. And as Councillor Davis did share, that that's a great sign of the health of our population. I do want to do a shout out to Dr Gilad Bino, who is a very, very successful researcher down in New South Wales, who has a very deep history and knowledge about platypus. And he was actually guiding both Timiel and Amy, our researcher, through the project. And they were, again, able to secure another platypus in this project. And as Councillor Davis did share, that was a previous platypus that Timiel had actually captured in Moghl Creek. So she caught that in 2020 and managed to tag it. And as these elusive creatures, there are not too many people that are tagging platypus, and it was one of her initial trappings in Moghl Creek. And so this is a great success for the diversity of the population within our urban regions. And it also really sparks the interest of many of our local residents. Which brings me to the secondary point within compliance, which is something that I'm very passionate about, and that is ensuring that our industrial zones and obviously our residents do the right thing. And remember that our waterways obviously flow down into our creeks, and that we need to be really considered about what we are putting down our drains and what we are putting down our stormwater outlets. So I really want to say a huge thank you to the news crew. They have done a fabulous job, and with your support, Councillor Davis, it has been phenomenal. Pooh Corner is a pretty unique space where you have wallabies, you have got platypus, and you've got the reintroduction of koalas. It is a pretty fabulous space, and like I said, it's in the heart of our city here. It's a very urban environment, and I'm just so grateful that we are so supportive of this incredible platypus programme. They are an important species, and we'll do everything to protect them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further speakers, Councillor Johnston.
Yes, just briefly on item A, the platypus project. I just want to put on the record my concern and interest with Councillor Hutton's actions with respect to the platypus. Yep. So generally speaking, yeah, generally speaking, you are not supposed to be handling native wildlife in Australia. And that's a pretty standard, that's...
Councillors. Councillor Johnston.
That was Councillor Hutton, just in case you wanted to name her particularly. So generally...
Councillor Johnston, I'm sorry, but the three-hour time limit. So we will now put item A to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by Councillor Massey, seconded by Councillor Chongwa. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bell. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour, two against and one abstention.
That is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. We'll now put items B and C to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. We'll now...
Division.
Division. Division called by Councillor Massey and seconded by Councillor Chongwa. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please read the result. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour and three against.
Motion is carried. Councillors, please return to your seats. We'll now put City Standards Committee report to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. That is carried. Now move to Community and the Arts Committee. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. That is carried. And finally, the Finance and City Governance Committee. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. That is carried. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Chongwa.
Yes, I'm tabling a petition, has received, requesting council install yellow, no stop line on both sides of entrance of Annie Street and Osman Street, Auckland Flower.
Councillor Dixon. Okay. Councillor Givney.
Chair, I have a petition here that I'm tabling for council to install additional public toilets facilities within Wyndham.
Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a petition requesting council does not remove the non-native fruit trees within Turbul Crescent Park in Carandale.
No further petitions. Councillor Dixon, may I have a motion, please?
Chair, I move that petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Second.
It has been moved by Councillor Dixon and seconded by Councillor Strunk that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? We'll now move to general business. Are there any items of general business? Councillor Adams.
I'm way over here, Councillor, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. I look, I just rise to say thank you to the news team and to the community on the fantastic community day that we had on Sunday for the opening of the new riding park. And I'm calling it a riding park because it's definitely not a skate park. And it is a BMX park, but then there's kids there that are on little bikes that don't even have pedals on them and are like three and are flying over the hugest thing. Councillor Davis and I were quite freaked out by this tiny little three-year-old was having the time of his life, and everyone was just going around him. But it's been a great journey with the community on this riding park. It became clear when the young boys in the community decided that some of the habitat group and the mulch that they were using would make really great bike jumps. So they were being very industrious and making their own bike jumps around the creek with the habitat group's mulch and using the dirt out of the creek as well, which wasn't taken too well by the local habitat group and those that walk through the park or in the middle of the dog park as well. So we figured that there might have been a need for a riding park. We started consultation probably three or four, probably three years ago now, and we did actually go down to the park, have a lemonade stand there and ask people to come down and tell us what they thought. And to their credit, the young boys, and at that time they were probably about 10 or 11, came down on their bikes. They didn't speak to us, that wasn't to be expected. They came up with their phones at a distance, took the QR code and rode away. But they definitely had their say in what they wanted to see, and they wanted to see something that was a little adventurous, something that was going to challenge them, and obviously something that they were happy to spend 24 hours a day, seven days a week at, because that's kind of what they've done for the last few days. I have to say, it has been an outstanding success. It's been a bit tricky with extreme weather we've had over the last six months. I have to call out Andrew Ensby and his amazing work that he does in the designs of these types of playgrounds. Every playground is different. He's done a small skate park, and it is a scooter and skate park for those probably underrated in Taragindi. This is a very, very different type of park, and he absolutely nailed what the kids in the area wanted. We were very lucky to have the space at Glendorman that was not being used at Glendorman Park. There is over 200 metres of riding path for this ride park. And what we saw on Sunday is, or what we saw for the last month, and we were trying to keep them out of the fencing while it was still being settled, was they were dying to get down there, and they got down there, they did. We had ice creams and coffees that, those tickets of 200 of those went within the first hour, hour and a half, and we had a fantastic day for about four hours. The weather was beautiful, and when I drove past again later that night at about quarter to six, they were still lined up there. Interestingly, either with 50 to 60 kids, they all know who's going and whose turn it is to go. So Lord of the Flies has taken over, they know who to decide who was in charge and when they're going. But the one feedback I did get from the coffee van and from the ice cream, that is that all the kids were so beautifully behaved and well-mannered on Sunday as well, that's what we saw on the riding park. Can I guarantee you, it is going to be one of the most popular BMX tracks in the coming years. We're hoping we'll see a gold medalist BMXer come out of there in the next seven years. But if you have any family that love their bikes, and there's plenty of adults there doing the tricks as well, come down to Glendorman Park and Hollan Park on Logan Road, the southern end of the park. It is going to be beloved for years to come. Thank you so much, Councillor Davis and your team, also to Trial Works, who actually did the work. I don't know how you get asphalt to set vertically, but they did. They did a fantastic job, and I'm very, very proud of it, and I look forward to watching the kids for years to come.
Further speakers, Councillor Chongwa.
Thank you, Chair. I will be speaking on the Brisbane City Council tree and shade canopy. As I said in my question to the Lord Mayor today, the ABC last Friday revealed disturbing findings from our investigation. A 2024 internal Brisbane City Council review warned that shade cover had declined from 35% to 32% in the 10 years to 2019. While this report quotes shade canopy rather than tree canopy, the bulk of the city's public space shade canopy is from mature trees. The council's report obtained by the ABC makes that very clear, and I quote, "This decline is in part due to ongoing high levels of tree removals, removing mature trees and replacing them with tube stock and juveniles." Is it a coincidence that the council does not publicly release any data about our city's shade canopy or tree canopy? I doubt it. Council has invested heavily in advanced satellite imagery and near-maps technology that provide precise data on tree canopy, but they won't release it. There is now clear evidence that the LMP administration has now, has been hiding the truth, that our city's prized mature tree shade canopy is being lost at an alarming rate. What is happening here is not just administrative negligence, it is environmental vandalism. The ABC story also quoted the report as warning that tree maintenance programmes were the first to be cut as budgets were tightened. Well, we know the council has been slashing tree and vegetation maintenance budgets, and we are likely to see further cuts by the Lord Mayor tomorrow. Our world is in unprecedented age of global warming and climate change. The earth has already exceeded an average increase of one degree. The latest IPCC projections are that if current government policies are maintained worldwide, we will see global warming reach an average increase of 2.7 degrees. The Australian Climate Council projects that for Brisbane, this will result in three times as many days over 35 degrees by 2050. The World Resources Institute predicts that with a two-degree warming, heat waves will increase by an average of more than five times. Our climate models predict that the frequency and duration of heat waves in Brisbane could become as frequent as 10% of the year by 2050. Protecting and expanding our mature tree canopy is actually our city's most important climate resilience strategy. According to the council's own research, Brisbane homes in suburbs with good tree canopies are seven degrees cooler than areas without trees. However, studies say we need at least 40% tree canopy cover to substantially lower daytime air temperatures. Unfortunately, losing our shade canopy and mature trees is not the whole story. As I've already revealed to these chambers, this LMP administration has also changed the city plan to allow for a reduction of green space by 290 hectares, based on population growth over the next 11 years. We know they are selling green space, giving away iconic green space for mega stadiums. We know they want to build hotels, tourist attractions, zip lines on our existing green space, all for their glorious Olympic tourist attractions. It is now absolutely clear why, clear why respected international sustainability indexes like Arcadis and GDS have downgraded Brisbane's sustainability ranking below Perth, Melbourne and Sydney. If this LMP administration says in control, stays in, sorry, if this LMP administration stays in control of our city any longer, we will see a city that was once a proud, lush green city become more of a concrete city full of high-rises, new mega stadiums, more roads, less parks, less sports fields, less green space and less mature trees. A city that is hotter, harsher and far less livable.
Further speakers. Councillor Givney.
Thank you, Chair. I rise today to speak on events on the Bayside, which seems to be a theme for me at the moment, and the OAM recipients in my area. Just wanted to have a big shout out to the incredible residents that came to join us for our first films on the field in the freezing cold on Saturday night at the Wyndham Vikings Football Club. We had about 200 people come along and rug up with hot chocolates and goodies to watch The Mighty Ducks. It was actually quite funny watching a movie that I haven't seen for a very long time in a new lens, so that was, it was a great night out, and it was very well attended, and we look forward to growing that in future with the club. I also wanted to thank Miss Councillor Atwood for coming along with baby Sam in the cold as well, and she does an incredible job to be able to, you know, juggle children and events in the cold. the cold and especially newborn babies. Some of you, if you want to see me at my best or maybe just my high school drama skills, you can check out the Winham Fringe video for our community day, it's pretty hilarious. I want to thank Tom Oliver and his team for putting that together. That community day is going to be a really great opportunity for our community to be able to come and have free access to the arts. We're closing the road, and I did talk about that a little bit last week, but I just thought if anyone wanted to have a laugh, they might want to check out the Instagram and Facebook for Winham Fringe. Just want to take a moment to congratulate two residents within my community who have been awarded OAMs recently as part of the King's Birthday acknowledgements. Auntie Becky, OAM for her recognition to lifelong service to the Indigenous community of Winham, her leadership of the Winham Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Corporation and her advocacy for aged care, education, health and sport. We appreciate all that Auntie Becky does, and she has a lot to do with the Brisbane City Council as well, as one of the representatives from our area, and I really enjoy spending time with her and getting to know her family over the last couple of years. Also to Dr Tony Haynes, OAM for her service to nursing. She's on a number of boards, committees and working groups that have advocated for nurses, and I congratulate her for being awarded an OAM, and it's members like Auntie Becky and Dr Haynes who contribute so significantly to our Bayside community, and we really appreciate the work that they do for their groups. And that's it for me, thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on four items. Musgrave Park, two, Auntie Dawn breaking boundaries, three, the Queensland Maritime Museum Historic Walk, and four, Romaros Centre Welcome Walk. I want to start by thanking through you Chair, Deputy Mayor Cunningham for our statements earlier. Through you Chair, earlier it was stated there were no incidents in the past month, which completely correlates with when this cruel council sent in police over 30, and from what I could see devastated council workers to kick out all the rough sleepers. This timeframe of this month also completely aligns, through you Chair, that I believe the deputy mayor should know, with the period that the fencing remained up in Musgrave Park because of the damage created by Panieri on the field. And from my understanding, there's still a section of the park that still needs to be rehabilitated. So through you Chair, I cannot wait to put these statements up online, the councillor, deputy mayor Cunningham put, and share the amazing spin that was used just then, earlier today, and share that with residents of Brisbane who actually do show compassion and can see through the break in gaslighting and revisiting of history. Anyway, anyone can actually have a look at the police data. I prefer to speak to the senior constable in West End Police Station, but I do say, people, please look at the data in West End in that time period through you, that Chair that councillor Cunningham talked about, because the numbers quoted weren't quite right. But anyway, through you Chair, I would like to officially invite Deputy Mayor Cunningham. Two are bi-monthly Musgrave Park meetings, which we've been having for over two years now. Grassroots organisations, service providers, QPS, Brisbane City Council, local and resident groups, honestly, anyone willing to come is invited. The next one is in August. I extend my invite because it seems like you really care about Musgrave Park. I certainly do. So prove it and come to the meeting in August. Come, I'll see you there. Further on Musgrave Park, to the petition, even though we passed it through, I just wanted to note on the petition, the reason why I said no to the recommendation, and it's really important, this petition was submitted in chambers on Musgrave Park in February, and the reply came through after Panieri when the power was turned on. This is really important to note on the record. The power wasn't turned on because of the rough sleepers, the power wasn't turned on about compassion, the power was turned on for Panieri Festival, noting that Panieri Festival is a beloved festival. But nonetheless, that's what happened, that's the time period. Secondly, I want to congratulate Auntie Dawn Daylight for her breaking boundaries art exhibition launch. I was privileged to have supported this project. Auntie Dawn is a local elder and my friend, and her story is one of resilience and resistance and mentoring and creating and giving generously to community members, not just in West End, but across the Gabba Ward. Auntie Dawn is a part of the stolen generation. At the age of 12, Auntie Dawn was taken from her family and, in her words, "put into servitude at All Hallows", just in the Fortitude Valley. And from that, she's been an amazing community advocate and delivers her story. Over 200 people came to People's Park Small Park on Boundary Street to celebrate. It was a stuffy kind of event, but that's the West End community in heart, and I just want to give a big shout out to Auntie Dawn. Thank you for everything, everything, and thank you for always having words of wisdom for me whenever we meet, which is often, thankfully. Very quickly in the end, shout out to Maritime Museum for their historic walk on Sunday morning. Big thanks to Keith, who was also a recent OMA, and the volunteers who joined. And of course, I joined the Romaros Centre for their welcome walk, joined a couple of hundred people, raising money for asylum seekers and refugees this Sunday, and we raised over $20,000. So great work from the Romaros Centre, and I'll see you for the next one.
Further speakers, councillor Kim.
Chair, I rise to speak on the Story Bridge and my grave concerns for the future of this Brisbane landmark. If the LMP put a $7 toll on the Story Bridge, like the Legacy Way, someone crossing twice a day, we pay nearly $5,000 a year, five grand just to use a bridge you've already paid for through your rates and taxes. This isn't governance, this is daylight robbery in peak hour traffic. The LMP like to call themselves the party of low taxes, but make no mistake, the Shrinners Council is a high-tax, high-cost-of-living council. Their bleeding families dry in the middle of a cost-of-living crisis. This $5,000 a year toll, it's a secret tax, a sneaky backpocket hit nobody voted for. And that's the real kicker, isn't it? Why didn't they campaign on it at the last election? I wonder how many posters they would have printed with, "Vote LMP, we'll tax you $5,000 for a bridge you already use for free." Real catchy, real honest. Instead, we got Mayor Shrinna doing his best, Mayor Quimby from The Simpsons impersonation, promising the people one thing and doing the complete opposite behind closed doors. The difference is, at least Mayor Quimby had the decency to be cartoonishly wrong. Shrinna's doing it with a straight face and a press release. And what are families meant to give up?
Prefer to the mayor by his correct title, please councillor.
Thank you. Mayor Shrinna's doing it with a straight face and a press release. What are families meant to give up? No more takeaways on Friday night, no more trips to Movie World with the kids, no more cinema dates or birthday treats. Sorry, kids, not this year, Santa's sleigh got caught in the toll queue. And for single parents already doing it tough, all that's left is pottles. And take a walk down your street and grab a handful of loose bitumen that's already on my desk, that's your Christmas lump of coal, there's already one right here. This isn't a city that's being led, this is a city that's being shaken down. The LMP Shrinna Council has turned into Springfield, where Mayor Quimby gives speeches about fiscal responsibility whilst slipping new taxes under the table. Except, this isn't a cartoon, this isn't real, this is real money, real families and real consequences. We're not asking for miracles, we're asking for a bridge that works and a council that doesn't make your life harder every time you drive to work. Brisbane deserves better than this stroke of a toll and this cartoon of a council. In the words of Homer Simpson, don't toll the story bridge.
Further speakers, councillor Parry.
Thank you very much, madam Chair, and I rise today to speak on one item, which is the recent and highly successful Rainbow Lorikeet Park World Environment Day Nature Fair, which took place Sunday a week ago. This is the first time this type of event had been held in Rainbow Lorikeet Park, and I'm very glad to report that it was a resounding success, attracting hundreds of local families. The weather was ideal, and having held a movie in the park a week beforehand in the pouring rain, that definitely was a reason why I believe it was so successful. Also the fact that we had so many wonderful community groups coming together to raise environmental awareness, share their education and talk about local bushland restoration efforts. Some highlights of the event included an engaging wildlife presentation by Diagula Wildlife featuring a wide variety of native animals, including a koala, echidna, bilby, gliders and lots more. Adults and children were very delighted alike. An informative session by Hollow Log Homes on our nest boxes, we installed them late last year, so we've got six nesting boxes in that park at the moment, and we were very, very excited to find two rosinella eggs, which is more than the gumnut leaves and the huntsman spider we found in the others. A very popular colouring in competition, which my boys took part in, but unfortunately were unsuccessful, but that's okay, that's part of being a councillor's child, even though perhaps their skills weren't quite there. And of course, a scavenger hunt, which brought strong engagement from our younger attendees. We had council's rock and roll litter prevention team there, who've appeared at a few events lately, and many families participated in litter collection in the park, and the officers reported that Rainbow Lorikeet is indeed one of the cleanest parks in the city. And of course, strong community involvement at the bush care stall, where more than 20 residents attended the Native Bee Hotel demonstration, and several others expressed an interest in a locally-produced photo book of native fauna from the park. The nature fair was well-supported with a free sausage sizzle, thanks to the Brisbane Inner North Lions Club, and a local coffee vendor, who both reported very strong engagement and very happy customers throughout the morning. Of course, with those barbecues, the smell is always delightful, and coffee as well. And what's most promising is that this event not only exceeded our expectations in terms of attendance, but also built lots of new partnerships. I know that the Bush Care Group and Brisbane Inner North Lions are already talking about a new community planning event happening in the September school holidays, so that's another one to add to the calendar. It goes without saying that these events wouldn't be possible without an army of volunteers behind them, so my sincere thanks goes to the Inner North Lions Ascoli Scouts, and of course, the dedicated volunteers, the Rainbow Lorikeet Bush Care Group. I would also like to extend a special acknowledgement to Rob Jamison, who's a longstanding bush care advocate and a highly respected local volunteer, whose leadership and tireless efforts were central to the event's success, it was also his idea from the get-go. Rob, we talk about Rainbow Lorikeet Park as a hidden gem, and Rob is a hidden gem too, so I'm very always pleased to work with him. He is the driving force behind that park's environmental stewardship. He also works very closely with the amazing Wes, who's in our Creek Catchment Programme team, and I know that they're sort of partners in crime or partners in the environment, so I'd like to extend my sincere thanks to Wes and his team. Madam Chair, the feedback from residents has been overwhelmingly positive, and we're already experiencing a very strong appetite to make this an annual fixture in our calendar, and it clearly demonstrated how environmental engagement fosters civic pride into general education and stronger neighbourhood connections. I would like to reiterate my thanks to all involved, particularly our community volunteers, council officers and event partners who contributed their time, expertise and energy to bring this event to life. I look forward to supporting similar initiatives in the future and continuing to work alongside our community to enhance the health, accessibility and vibrancy of our local parks. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Johnston.
Yes, I just rise to speak briefly on the LMP's further attack on transparency and accountability when it comes to the finances of Brisbane City Council. Late this afternoon, we were advised that we would not be provided with the council budget papers tomorrow, as is normally the case. Budget papers for the 17 years that I've been a councillor have been available to us on the desk at the start of the meeting, which is bad enough because you don't get them in advance yet. And councillor Griffith's been here 21 years and who knows how long beforehand. Now, very late this afternoon, we received an email saying that in line with existing procedures for council documents being made available electronically prior to council meetings, the 2025-2026 annual plan and budget will be uploaded to LG Hub at 11:00 AM on Wednesday the 18th of June 2025. Now, the basis of that statement is fundamentally false, and I'm sorry to say this, because it's a council officer I generally respect, but what has been said in this email is false. Let's start with this, in line with existing procedure for council documents, the existing procedure for council documents is we are provided with documents electronically two working days before the council meeting, which is generally 5:00 PM on Thursday. That is the existing council procedure for documents which are electronically provided to councillors. So this is not in line with that existing procedure, absolutely not in line with that existing procedure that this council officer refers to. Worse still, it is not in line with the standard that has been carried out in this chamber for 20 years plus, which is to provide information to councillors at the time the budget is being announced. Instead, there'll be probably 300-odd pages of the budget, including pages and pages of tables, detailed information about fees and charges. Apparently, we're supposed to view them all on our tiny little screens, all 300 pages in one go. Now, of course, we can't download those documents or print them because we'll be here, and it is not possible to properly review those documents on a tiny little computer. So the suggestion that we should be bringing our electronic devices means that this council really does not want us to see what's in the budget. Now, here's the issue, here is the big issue. I suspect the Lord Mayor will come in here tomorrow and hold up a budget book, so the budget book will have been printed. The budget book would have been printed days, if not a week or two ago, it's usually done a week or two in advance. So this council, including senior council officers, have known for days, if not a week or more, that no budget books were going to be printed for councillors. Did they tell us in advance? No. They waited until the night before the budget to try and slip it in, and it has the purpose of making it harder for elected representatives to, one, read the budget, two, understand the budget, three, debate and discuss the budget, and four, vote on meaningful financial activities in this city. Now, I don't know who made the decision, but it is the Lord Mayor's budget, so it's the Lord Mayor who's done this. If our budget books are presented to journalists tomorrow in the budget lockup, that will be something I'm sure we will hear about, and then the question will be asked, why is it journalists are getting copies of the printed budget books? And why aren't the people who actually make the decision about the budget being given a copy of the budget books? Now, if any LMP councillor thinks this is a good thing, I encourage you to stand up and sing the Lord Mayor's praises about this decision, because it will be worse for you as well. So good luck downloading the 300-plus pages that you need tomorrow to review the budget, but no doubt you've been told in advance what's in the budget, whereas we have to go through it line by line and have a look. But this is an attack on transparency and democracy, and it lessens the oversight we as elected representatives have to undertake as part of our statutory responsibilities. It is an appalling thing to dress it up as existing procedure when clearly it is not and has never been.
Further speakers, councillor Wong.
Yeah, thanks, madam Chair. I just wanted to do two things, I just want to respond to some of the comments from councillor Johnston and councillor Kim, and also to complete my list of thank yous from earlier. But the important thing to reflect upon when we consider both councillor Johnston and councillor Kim's comments is the deep-seated belief in a conspiracy everywhere that those two individuals turn, that the very idea that putting the budget book into LG Hub the way that we propagate all of our documents ordinarily week after week in this place, that that is somehow now tantamount to a secretive conspiracy makes no sense. That it's an electronic document, I imagine, that you can navigate quite quickly, much more quickly than you can navigate a book, does not indicate a conspiracy, it does not indicate an attack on democracy. It is part of this new age we all are forced to live in. I too, I too have been here a long time, and I too am used to my books, but I have learned, but I have learned and I have accepted the future's coming, and that the future is here, and that we have long accepted, you know, on the topic of memories and computers, I recall when we did city plan 2014 and we were each given iPads, because it was so big, we couldn't have it printed for ourselves, so we were each issued an iPad to navigate... So we were each issued an iPad to navigate that document. That wasn't deemed, that wasn't deemed an attack on transparency or democracy. It was in fact viewed as an effort to make it easier for councillors to navigate what was a complex document. As it is with tomorrow, where we'll see a electronic budget, which will be navigable much the same way that we handle our weekly council papers. It brings us to our second conspiracy, councillor Kim's conspiracy, where she believes that, that the Liberal National Party is seeking to put a price on using the Story Bridge. Well, there's only one group of people who are barracking for that. And I've said that before, it's Labor councillors and their consorts in other levels of government. That is the only people who are barracking for this. And not because they care about the Story Bridge, not because they care about the people of Brisbane, but because they wish to make a political issue of it. And that has been a marker of every action they have done around that. The Lord Mayor has rejected the toll, I have rejected the toll, the Premier has rejected the toll. But as we discussed earlier, the federal government believes that the Bradfield Highway in Brisbane is a local road and less important than the Yorongah Park water pump. I don't think they seriously do. I think that when the time comes, the federal government and the state government will be firm partners on this. The only people who don't want them to be firm partners are the councillors in this place. Now, also, it's important to remember that the ratepayers of Brisbane already pay for the Story Bridge. But the ratepayers of Logan, the ratepayers of Ipswich, the ratepayers of Redlands, who use the Story Bridge more than 40,000 times a day, use it for free. And that's why the state and federal government should come to the party. So the Brisbane ratepayer contributes to its upkeep and its improvement. The Redlands ratepayer pays nothing. And they use, those and Morton Bay use about 40,000 trips a day. And then the rest of the country uses about two and a half to 3,000 trips a day. And that's why we believe that other governments should contribute. Because it's not right that only Brisbane ratepayers bear this burden. And however, councillor Kim believes cartoonishly that they should. And that only, only Brisbane ratepayers should pay for this and subsidise Logan, Ipswich and Redlands. That's some total of her argument. And of course, the point of councillor Kim's speech tonight was to get the yuck, yuck, yuck jokes on TikTok. Well done, you've made a 25-year-old joke about Mayor Quimby, who is not, I'm sorry to say, he was relevant when I was 23, not, not now.
One moment.
I claim to be misrepresented.
Can you turn your microphone off, please? Thank you. Councillor.
I claim to be misrepresented.
Kim, I note your claim of misrepresentation.
I'm sure it's very amusing to elder millennials and Gen Xs. I'm not sure if it works, I'm not sure if it's going to work with the cohort under 30. That being said, I would like to take a quick moment. As I said, there's always an opportunity to forget people when you do thank yous. So further people I'd like to thank for my time at BI, Ashok, Glenn, Rowan, Deb, Sam, Chris, Matt, Stacey, Andrea, Louis, Angelo and Adelaide, all of whom are excellent officers that I've worked with many times over the years. And I wish them nothing but the best for their future careers.
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Further misrepresentation, councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to note that I don't believe personal attacks about somebody's age should be used in this room, especially about serious matters as well. And I also don't believe that this is exclusively an issue for 25-year-olds.
Your point of misrepresentation is not to debate what was said, it is to tell us where you are misrepresented in that.
Well, I believe I'm being misrepresented because equally like councillor Wines, I was also elected to this position by the residents of Calumbell Ward.
Okay, that's not a, I'm sorry, it's not a misrepresentation. Thank you, thank you councillor. That's not a misrepresentation.
And thank you councillor Wines for following my social media.
Are there any, councillor Kim, further speakers?
Oh, yes.
Councillor Griffiths.
Oh, I'm always around councillor Murphy. In fact, let me outline what I'd like to talk about. I'd like to talk about the incompetence of the LNP. That will be long. I'd like to talk about a visit to the Willawong Bus Depot, where no LNP members are spotted. And I'd also like to respond to councillor Parry. So let's start off with councillor Parry. And I do note that.
Councillors, thank you. Councillor Griffiths.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do note that councillor Parry talked about Rainbow Laura Keat Park. And I was great to hear how she's so pro bushland and she's so pro the community. Did she actually manage to tell any of her residents that she's voted against buying bushland over the last few weeks? And she's voted against more tree cover over the last few weeks? Did she mention to do any of that? No, silence. It'd be good to be honest with your residents about what you actually do and what you do in this chamber. Sorry, excuse me.
Councillors, let's hear what councillor Griffiths has to say, please.
Councillor Parry's very brave over there. So yeah, talk to your residents about actually what you actually vote on. Because once I actually hear, and I know that a few of my residents have been actually horrified with councillor Cunningham, councillor Adams, because they're misled about how the bushland levy was spent when they had a meeting with those two. Secondly, I'd like to talk about a visit to Willawong Bus Depot. Councillor Charles Drunk and councillor Emily Kim came along with me to Willawong Bus Depot. We met many, many employers. In fact, there are hundreds of employees out there, hundreds of great employees out there. And it was good to meet with them. And, but they had a number of issues that were very legitimate to them, which they raised with us and which I said we raised in the chamber. The first one relates to bus driver safety, and there's been an issue going on for years. Apparently, the money for the barriers, the safety barriers in the buses is not continuing. And so a number, a majority of our buses at the Willawong Depot will not have safety barriers. Do we have anyone from the LNP speak up about that? Previous chair? Silence, oops. I just raise that issue and say that's wrong. All our staff should be safe. We've heard it repeatedly over the last few weeks. Our staff have a right to be safe. Well, that includes our bus driver staff as well. Secondly, I hadn't realised, but their gym equipment, their gym out there got canned by the LNP so that they could build the metro. So we have a gym for our other drivers at all the other depots, but we don't have one out there. And the third thing they raised, which I was very concerned about, was apparently the previous councillor, councillor Angela Owen, actually had keys to the bus depot. Now, I don't know how you get keys and access to a bus depot. I don't understand, you know, I don't understand a lot of things that happen in this council, but that's certainly one I don't understand, I don't think it's appropriate. I would then like to go on to the incompetence, and where do you start? I think councillor Johnston hit it on the head when she said the, the way that you're dealing with this budget session just shows how arrogant the LNP is. I think last year, we saw the figures cut from the budget. This year, we're actually seeing the budget document cut. Now, I understand state and federal members get a hard copy of the budget document. And it didn't surprise me, there was councillor Murphy, who was joking and saying, move with the times. And councillor Wines saying, move with the times. It didn't surprise me, I thought, yep, they're the people who have also cut the bus timetables. And my office is spending so much time with so many elderly people who don't have access to technology. And I thought, that's it, they're just so out of touch. They just don't give a, they don't give a rat's whatever about residents. And I, I, you know, I'm really disturbed by that. If you think everyone out there has got technology, you aren't in touch with who's out there. And then I was interested, councillor Wines did a speech about federal funding. Well, the feds need to fund this, and the feds need to do that, and the feds need to do that. I didn't hear him say anything about the state. Not a thing. Didn't hear a thing. He gave me or gave us example after example after example of all the fed funding that was coming our way.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor. I note your claim.
Oh, this is going to be fun.
Councillor Griffiths, your time has expired. Councillor, your point of misrepresentation.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Madam Chair. Look, the point, of course, of misrepresentation is if you had read the BI report, you would see that it spoke to LRCI grants, but also the grants provided directly by the state government, including the 2021 COVID Works, the Unite and Recover Community Grants and the SEQ CSP, all of which were community grants and well discussed within my report.
Councillor Givney.
Point of order, Madam Chair. I move that council now adjourn for dinner, which, for one hour, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Givney and seconded by councillor Adamin, that council adjourn for dinner for a period of one hour, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it, the meeting will be adjourned when all councillors have left the chamber.
Any further speaker for general business? I see there's no further speaker. Yep, well, now we go to the consideration of notified motion. Councillor, I draw your attention to the notice of motion at item eight on the agenda. Councillor Messi, would you please move the motion? Yeah. So would you like to move the motion or should I just declare meeting closed? Well, if there's no, no, yep.
Yeah, let's move it, let's do it. Yeah, I appreciate it, I just said let's move it. All right, thank you. I move that this council commits reallocating one lane of general traffic on the Story Bridge to create a fully protective active transport lane for pedestrians, bike riders, scooter users, to provide safe, accessible and direct connection between Kangaroo Point and Fortitude Valley, while the Story Bridge footpaths remain closed.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Messi, seconded by councillor Chonghua, that this council commits to reallocating one lane of general traffic on the Story Bridge to create a fully protective active transport lane for pedestrians, bike riders and scooter users to provide a safe, accessible and direct connection between Kangaroo Point and Fortitude Valley, while the Story Bridge footpath remain closed. Is there, is there any debate?
Oh, I have to introduce it. Let's be honest, the LNP council has completely mismanaged the Story Bridge. That's clear to everyone in this chamber and to residents across the city. But while the mess plays out, the most immediate issue we need to address is access. Safe, practical and equitable access across the river. It's been over three months since both the Story Bridge footpaths were closed and still no clear timeline for reopening. We know now that they are potentially likely to be closed till until the end of 2025. In that time, people trying to get to work, to school, to medical appointments or just get home, are left to deal with a down route, dangerous and long-deep tour. And before anyone tells me there's a ferry or a bus, let's be clear. In Kangaroo Point, in the pointy bit, the high density bit, there is no City Cat. And there's one bus that services the area, the 234, which is incredibly infrequent. This is something I've talked about many times in this chamber. And, you know, that could have been fixed, keeping the 27 delivering a City Cat to Kangaroo Point. But this administration didn't deliver that. Just last week, I submitted a petition with over 1,700 people, signing it in less than three weeks, calling for the protective active transport lane. These are everyday people, not radicals as the Lord Mayor likes to claim. Just people trying to get across the river safely. Though, through that, it was clear that the Lord Mayor keeps suggesting that I'm secretly behind everything, including the protest. And I don't know, maybe I am, but it looks like that I wasn't. It was actually just normal people. And I've been CC'd into a lot of emails of normal people.
Councillor Marks.
Yeah, everyday people, residents of Brisbane. And I've been CC'd into a few emails from people in other electorates that have CC'd me and said to me, said to, like, blind CC'd me to their councillors in other wards going, I'm just a regular resident, I'm not a radical, and I believe that we need to open this up. So let's get to the facts. Waterfield barriers could easily be used to protect one of the outer lanes of traffic and create a shared path. Sure, it wouldn't be the widest path ever, I acknowledge this, but it would still be wider than the footpaths people are currently squeezed onto on the southern part of the Story Bridge. Through you, Chair, the Lord Mayor keeps saying footpaths have to be three metres wide and over the river. That's mostly true, but once you get off the main span and hit, hit land, especially towards the Kangaroo Point part, the footpaths are narrow, about 2.4 metres. And that's before you account for the light poles and the fencing that eat into the space. The excuse that there's not enough room just doesn't add up. Each traffic lane on the bridge is approximately 3.1 metres wide. And if you use standardised waterfield barriers, which are about half a metre wide, you're still left with about 2.5 metres of space for walking, riding or scooting. That's more space than many people have on bike paths and shared paths all across the city. So let's be clear, this isn't a technical problem, it's a political choice. And let's talk about what happens at night. Between midnight and 6am, there are no ferries, there are no buses to go, that go to that highly dense part of Kangaroo Point. There is no connection to Howard Smith Wharf, there is no connection to the valley. So what is people supposed to do? There have been many reports of people climbing around the barriers, walking on the road or illegally riding scooters across the bridge in dangerous situation. So essentially, we're not talking about some radical new experiment here. Cities across Australia, including this city, already have demonstrated that reducing road space doesn't create gridlock, and we've done this. We did it in 2022 in Tewong. So let's stop pretending that it's too hard, let's stop waiting for the perfect and deliver what's possible, noting that this isn't a forever solution. It's a common sense interim fix. I urge the council to support this motion and show the people of Brisbane that their safety, their mobility and their right to access the city actually matters.
Any further speaker on the motion? Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I, I took particular note of this particular motion in the papers yesterday. And there was a few components of it that I actually drew out. One was the fact that we are talking about one general lane. The next bit that I took away from this motion was that it needed to be protected. The next part was the word safe. So I put together a little mathematical board. I apologise to the councillors on my left who can't see. Mr Simpson, my grade 10 technical drawing teacher would be quite proud of me. I did actually use the skills he taught me in grade 10. This is a scale, a one to 10 scale, accurate to the millimetre on the amount of room that we have on the bridge, on the Story Bridge. We have the transit lane here, we have the proposed lane here that councillor Massey and councillor Chonghua are talking about. What we require is a buffer between the road and the water barrier at a bare minimum. Under the road rules, it has to be 300. It could be up to 1.1 metres, depending on the speeds and what the engineers say. For, for traffic travelling at 60 kilometres now, the water barrier has to have a base width of at least 670 millimetres. Now, on top of that, you also need to put a fence. Because if a cyclist hits the barrier, they could go over it. So that's also another factor that's brought into it. On the other side, where we have the footpath side, there is a small guardrail that just really goes up about yay high, it only sits about 700. Barriers have to go there as well, primarily because if a cyclist hits that barrier or turns into that barrier. or turns into that barrier, they could flip over the guardrail and off the bridge. So as a bare minimum requirement there, they need a pedestrian rated water barrier, which again has a fence and it's three hundred and sixty mils. So the travelling distance that we have in between both barriers and fences ends up with a result of one point seven seven metres. It's not a lot, thank you for the interjection councillor Adaman. On top of that, if you look at the bikes that people use today, most of the handbars are almost eight hundred mils wide. That would mean cyclist passing in each direction would have a distance of four centimetres between the handlebars, which is quite close. So in terms of what we are talking about with this motion, and I appreciate that councillor Massey said it's not a technical problem. It is a technical problem, it's a very solid technical problem. It's a mathematical problem, it's an engineering problem. This is why this motion cannot be sorted, uh, be supported. It technically cannot work. Correct. So what we now have, pardon me, is we have two cyclists passing in very, very close proximity to each other at risks of their handlebars hitting. And we all know what happens if cyclists going in opposite directions and the handlebars hit. They get thrown off. So councillors, based on councillor Massey's and councillor Chong Hua's motion here and based on the mathematics that we've done here and the geometry of the road and the barriers that are required to provide a safe riding lane, I urge you not to support this motion.
Any further speaker? Councillor Chong Hua.
Thank you Chair, um, thank you councillor Massey for moving this motion to accommodate active travel commuters, a safe passage connecting Kangaroo Point to Fortitude Valley by opening one lane of the Story Bridge. On the weekend, I joined the Story Bridge Active Travel Alliance Legal Peaceful Protest, calling on this LMP council to open up one lane of the Story Bridge. I've got to say, the current recommended detour is utterly unsafe and a long way around. I walked the long detour and got a deeper understanding of why the active travel groups are justifiably angry. This LMP administration is forcing people into dangerous city peak hour traffic with no safe bicycle or pedestrian infrastructure. The active travel community cannot be filled by the mistruths that have been stated by the Lord Mayor regarding the reason for not opening the lane for the active travellers. This Lord Mayor has said that opening one lane would be too narrow at two point five metres and therefore too dangerous to active travellers. Does he think that city traffic is safer? The active travel group sees through this manipulation spin that is being used to justify not opening a lane on the Story Bridge. We know it's possible. From another weather disaster, the twenty twenty-two floods, this council used a lane of Coronation Drive to give cyclists a safe path while the bikeway was blocked, as councillor Massey said in her speech. On the weekend, we heard from the lead organizer that there are hundred and forty-two shared paths that are two point five metres or less, or less. This council's done it before and can do it again. Once again, we see the Lord Mayor and the LMP administration prioritizing motor vehicles over pedestrians, cyclists and scooter safety. I strongly support this motion.
Any further speaker? Councillor Howard.
Uh, thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. Um, and, Mr Deputy Chair, I would just like to note that the only opposition that's here in the chamber are the Greens, that nobody else bothered to come back after dinner. But I'd also like to echo the comments from councillor Toomey about what a disaster such a proposal would be for residents in both my ward and wards on the south side, like the deputy mayor's ward, councillor Collier's ward and councillor Massey's ward. I know how frustrated locals are about the footpath closures. I talk to locals every day who've been inconvenienced by the closure, but they understand it is needed to protect community safety. A lot of these residents have asked me about closing down the lane. It seems like a simple solution, but as councillor Toomey pointed out, it's not. I don't blame residents for asking the question, it's a question worth asking and we have even asked the officers to look into it. And they told us that it would be totally unworkable. The consequences of this so-called solution would be far more disruptive than the footpath closures already there. The Greens and Labor Coalition of Chaos should know better. They should know that this proposed solution is no solution at all. Even if pedestrians could safely walk across an active transport lane on the Story Bridge, they wouldn't be able to safely exit. I know that on my side of the bridge, the northern approach to the bridge is Kemp Place and Ivory Street, two very busy intersections. There would be no safe point for active travel users to safely transition to a footpath connection. Outside of peak hour, traffic travels very quickly on and off the bridge and there's a risk that people attempting to walk or ride across could be injured or worse. And during peak hour, we know that there's already congestion pressures coming on and off the bridge into the city or the northern suburbs. We would see gridlock up Barry Parade and Street, Breakfast Creek Road, Bowen Bridge Road and the CBD. This would flow into major connections like the Riverside Expressway, the inner city bypass, Winham Road, Gimpy Road, Stanley and Vulture Streets. This is where a large volume of buses are trying to get through, locals are trying to get to work or drop their kids off at school. They would be stuck in some of the worst traffic snarl central ward has seen if we shut off one or two lanes of the Story Bridge all day, every day. But most importantly, Deputy Chair, it's one of the primary connections for emergency services to access Brisbane's three major hospitals, the Royal Brisbane on the north side of the bridge and the Princess Alexandra and Queensland Children's Hospital on the south side. Locking down that connection would be a disastrous outcome and I know it's something my residents won't support. When the Greens took a plan to close down traffic lanes on the Story Bridge to the last council election, residents in my ward did not support that plan. They didn't support it then and they won't support it now. So to locals who have been impacted by the closures, I say thank you for your patience. We understand your frustration and we are working very hard on real solutions to get the footpaths open as soon as possible. Thank you Deputy Chair.
Any further speaker? Councillor Wine.
Yeah, thanks, uh, Mr Deputy Chair. I just wanted to make some contributions to this debate and, and I think listening to the speakers before me, the debate effectively turns on really one idea. What is more important here, the science or the politics? Our people have argued from a scientific method through councillor Toomey that one lane is not safe. We can't actually achieve the outcome sought by the cycling community through one lane. The practical outcome of what councillor Toomey is saying and what the Greens' councillor is asking for is two lanes. That's how you get the safe widths. So it doesn't, it's not merely one line, it's two lanes. And to members of the cycling community who, um, who share the Green Party's view that this is a political question, I want to assure you that the full consideration of, of how this would work was made and not just in a specific way, the way that councillor Toomey considered through the operation of the cycling lanes themselves, but also what effect these closures would have beyond the Story Bridge. And as councillor Howard rightly points out, they echo deep into the city in all directions. It is a major thoroughfare. So, uh, there, there was something that councillor Massey said, something like, this is about a choice that has been made, implying that somehow the majority councillors, the, the team shriner councillors have made a choice to the detriment of the cycling community. In response to that, I would say, I don't think that's right and there's quite a bit of evidence to that. Not only that, the fact that we considered what one, what removing one lane for cycling would look like, but the fact that the origin point of the footpath on the Kangaroo Point side is the same origin point of the Kangaroo Point Active Transport Bridge. A sincere investment by this council to improve cycling, pedestrian, scooting, whatever connectivity in that, in that community. So if we, if we sincerely held the view that we were accused of that we have some issue with the cycling community, then why would we have constructed such a thing? There makes, there is no reason why we would do that unless we sincerely believed in the outcome, which we did. And then, uh, those travellers would then use the quite, quite, it's a quite spectacular bridge and a quite beautiful walk along the, the city reach boardwalk to the, to the common point at, at Fortitude Valley. As I said, the science of this, the reason of this sits here with the majority, but the politics and the accusations, that's all the Green councillors. But this is consistent with what they have tried to do here. As we know, the, the two Green councillors with us today ran on a platform of closing down two lanes on the Story Bridge for a tram between, uh, the racetrack at Hamilton and, um, Garden City. I'm not sure what science was behind that, but once again, a, a political choice, a political choice, because I, I'm not really sure. A former councillor, Free Ranger Nathan, probably did that trip personally and thought it would be neato to do that. But, um, this, this is not about biasing one community over the other. This council, this majority, Team Shriner, has a long history of catering to all communities. And, and the fact that we are not simply agreeing doesn't mean that we don't, it doesn't mean we have an issue with particular members of a community. It means that the practical outcome is, is so negative, it can't be considered. It can't be implemented. However, there is a wonderful, brand new, very attractive, as I learned, as we learned this morning, award-winning bridge right next to it, which I encourage people to use. So, um, with this bridge, there are a lot of practical issues. There are a lot of engineering issues. There's the reality of science that we have to deal with. Um, and some people, some people here want to make it about politics and about picking winners and losers and, and implying that because something can't be done in a scientific manner, that means it's a political decision. Well, I reject that, the majority of councillors reject that and I trust will be rejecting this proposal today.
Any further speaker? No further speaker, um, councillor Massey, your right of reply.
Thank you, uh, Deputy Chair and I thank everyone for their contributions today. Um, I might begin with that end note. Uh, actually, one thing that stood out to me through you chair that councillor Toomey stated, it is an engineering issue, right? Very quickly here, there are multiple engineering issues that have been talked about, about the left side on the rail. Whether it is precast, uh, concrete panels, thin gabion walls that are only a hundred and fifty millimetres, the precast contract that I'm talking about is a hundred millimetres, a block wall with a, with a render, which is a hundred and forty millimetres or a steel barrier wall fabricated or found somewhere else, which can be fifty to a hundred millimetres. These are all options that could be reviewed for the left-hand side. And the left-hand side, thinking of this as an engineering solution, right? If we're talking about the side that kinda, that through you chair, that councillor Toomey was saying, we need to ensure that people don't go over the railing and go into the river, right? There are actually engineering issues. None of these were discussed, none of these were talked about. It was a simple, very simplistic, there's just got to be two water barrels, noting that water, um, barriers can also, the thinnest one that can be hired, and I know this through my event experience, is actually forty-five millimetres, which intrinsically would give you well over the one point seven millimetres that through you councillor Toomey was talking about. So that's the first thing I'm going to say there. There is, there is, we don't see the work. Councillor Toomey brings this thing, sets set assumptions that, that don't have any sort of like, um, further thought or discussions about it in relation to other potential engineering issues and, and solutions that could be found. So that's the first thing I'm going to say there. Secondly, I'm going to move on to, um, through you chair, to some of the things that councillor Howard said. Through you chair, uh, councillor Howard, I have been CC'd by many of your residents into your responses. And these responses that I've seen from your office, through you chair, uh, deputy chair, um, make no details about why it can't happen. None whatsoever. And when we talk about the traffic chaos that you're, you're, you're speaking about, we are already in traffic chaos. Brisbane is one of the top ten cities in the world for traffic. And the opportunity to decrease that traffic and to try to keep people safe by enabling them to get across is something a lot of people in your, through you chair, to Vicky Howard, councillor Howard, sorry, um, a lot of people have talked to me about. You know, just recently, I had a seventy-two-year-old pensioner contact me from Kangaroo Point saying, I pay rates, why can't I get across the bridge? I have to go to the doctors. And of course, so many of these problems that we've talked about today could have been sorted out if this council had actually delivered sufficient public transport to Kangaroo Point. And then maybe there would have been a way for safe crossing. That is maybe something this council could do. They could do a dedicated crossing to Howard Smith Wharf from Kangaroo Point. They could increase the frequency of two, three, four, but they don't choose to do this. And that's obvious. That's obvious from this debate, that they don't choose to do this because they don't prioritise public transport. Noting that the detour again is unsafe, noting that people are taking unsafe options. And then, of course, um, I'll move to some of the words that councillor Wine says about cyclists and having to exit. Through you chair, I think councillor Howard talked about this also. The new Gray Street and Melbourne Street cycleways have no way to exit on it. People literally have to pick up their bikes and go on the footpaths. So to say that this is unsafe now, when it's actually standard practice by this council is literally cherry picking and choosing when safety matters. And it's obvious that the LMP council is going to vote this down, but let me be clear, there are engineering solutions and the things that they say they're unsafe here, they're already doing all across our city.
I now put the motion to the vote. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Okay, well, okay. Those against say no? The nose heaven.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Massey, seconded by councillor Chong Hua. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Please ring the bell. Uh, Clark, please read the result.
Mr Deputy Chair, the nose heaven, the voting being two in favour and fourteen against.
The motion is lost. I declare the meeting closed. Thank you, everyone.